We're now ready to start. We apologize. We've had some technical difficulties. So this regular meeting of the City of Southfield on June 21st, starting at 6:30, is being conducted via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks, Brightwell, Cruz.
Thank you, Lisa.
Frazier. Haskins.
Air.
Mandelbaum. We're going to start. We apologize. Taylor. Here.
Madam President, we do have a form and excuse. Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. I will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next, we have appointments.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is Councilman Mandelbaum. We have a number of reappointments. I'll just quickly read them, and there's two explanations. But we have a reappointment to the ACS Commission of Ronald Miller. We have an appointment to the ACS Commission of Donna Sanders, and actually that, she is a current member, but she's an alternate, and she is becoming a regular member. We have reappointments of COSA for Latina Denson, Sarah Habbo, David Walker, Cheryl Walker. Reappointments to the Historic Designation Advisory Board, Dale Guyer and Corey Moffett. Reappointments to the Public Art Commission of Ronald Berry. Reappointment to the Total Living Commission of Kyra Harris Bolden, Sabina Heller, Shanaya Jarrett, Patricia McMillan, Debra Walton Medley, and Louis Williams. A reappointment to the Veterans Commission of Danny Craig. And reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals of Jody Defoe, Moshe Friedman, Myra Selesny, and an appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals of Jason Rogers, who was currently serving as an alternate, but has now been made a regular member. And their appointment timeframes are listed in the packet that was submitted to the council members.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Frazier.
I move that we approve all the appointments and reappointments that were just listed in a positive.
Councilwoman Banks, support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of all the reappointments and appointments as presented on the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell.
Yes.
Frazier. Frazier.
Yes.
Haskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
And Banks.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum, is there any of the appointments or reappointments on the line that wanted to speak tonight to your knowledge?
I would not know. I don't know if Ms. Hawkins knows.
I was not given any information of anyone who wanted to speak tonight, Madam President, and.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, and congratulations to each and every one of you. And thank you for volunteering and for your service. Next, we have one consent agenda item for approval or discussion. And we can make.
Question. I have a question, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Before we make a motion on this item, there were, I believe, five, wait, hold on, five vendors that were on the list. And one of the vendors, their price per hour and everything else was three times the amount of the other four vendors. And I guess I'd like to know why that one vendor is on, and, you know, should they be removed? I mean, their price just seems very, very excessive compared to the other four people.
Facilities, would you care to speak to that?
Council President.
Yes.
It's my understanding that Purchasing did this as qualifications. So these vendors are all qualified, but while, when we select the vendors, obviously, price is a substantial consideration. We will never get to the most expensive vendor, probably.
Okay, so then why would they even be on the list? We've got five vendors to select from.
Well, that may be more a purchasing question, but my understanding is that they are qualified to do the work. But of course, then it's up to the department to make the intelligent choice with our money. And I assure you, we always take the least expensive vendor who's able to do the work.
This is just my own personal opinion. I respect the response and thank you, but I'm not sure if I agree. I don't think someone who's four times the amount of, or excuse me, three times the amount of, there's two of the vendors, should even be on this list when there's four other ones to select from. Not unless they do a special, something special that's not outlined in this letter to us.
I certainly understand the concern, and that may be a question Purchasing is more able to address.
Okay, thank you for that concern. Do you want us to take it back to, I mean, we can take a question and ask Purchasing how they select their vendors or something to that effect? Councilwoman Banks, do you want us?
I would like an answer, because you've got, when you talk about a vendor $38 an hour, $40 an hour, you know, $58 an hour, $75 an hour, then $120 an hour. I mean, and the $120 vendor, even their weekend rate is like a lot more expensive than the other ones. It just doesn't seem like it falls in line with the other ones.
Well, I don't know if we can necessarily not take a bid from someone. It's an open bidding process. I believe if they want to bid, they can. You know, I don't, I don't know if we would have the authority to say, no, we don't want this vendor on our list anymore. But maybe, maybe we can. I can ask Purchasing, but if it's an open bid, depending on who's all on that area that they're sending the, sending out for quote, they could respond back.
And Madam President, you are correct.
Maybe I'm missing, okay.
This was a process to identify qualified painting companies. They met our qualifications and they provided their prices. When we go through the list, we start with the cheapest, and that's who we go with if they're qualified, and they can do the job. So we don't get to the more expensive vendors.
Okay, so I guess one last question. If we had 25 people on this list, if they were qualified, would there be 25 vendor names on here? I'm just curious.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, Councilwoman Banks?
If 25 qualified vendors had submitted a request for painting services, and if they are qualified, would we have a list of 25 people to select from?
I think.
Council President.
Go ahead.
Certainly would be my hope. That would give us the most variety to choose from. There may be a special job that maybe only one or two painters can handle. That would be actually wonderful. I mean, you can't have too many options.
And Madam President, for our, for the process for this request for qualifications, and we post this, if the business owners do meet the qualifications, they will go on the list. There's no guarantee that they will be picked, but we cannot discriminate against them just based on them if we say that they meet the qualifications. Now, they don't have to be chosen, but they do have to be included on the list if they meet the qualifications that were set forth in our request for qualifications.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification. I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the conversation. Counsel, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have another question also.
Okay.
In the, in the spreadsheet that it laid out, it indicated that we had the low vendor, vendor of $38 and the high vendor of $120 for that hourly rate, Monday through Friday, Friday. In the write-up, this is purely just a technical. It only, it only lists $40 to 120. Is that just an oversight? Clearly an oversight. Or there's something wrong with the spreadsheet?
John, you'll have to answer that one for me. I don't know.
John, you see what it's got, $38?
Unfortunately, I believe that is an oversight. I did not do the computations. It came through Purchasing after the qualification process. So there may be dollars and cents at stake there.
Hi, this is Nikki.
Hi, Nikki.
Hi, I just joined. That is an oversight. It is the $38 to the 120, to the 120, the standard rates. This, just to answer a question for Councilwoman Banks, if I may?
Sure.
So as it's been stated, this is a list of qualified vendors. These are not only for hourly rate type projects, but if there are projects out there that departments need quotes for, they can call and get quotes. If it's a larger project, it's not always based on our hourly rate. So we'd rather have more competition than less.
Thank you.
Thank you. So for you, Mr. Brightwell, it was, it was an oversight on the, from the Purchasing Department?
Okay, I just want to verify that it wasn't oversight, that the $38 was a good number. And that is the number that the working department, we will be looking at, $38, not $40. Is that correct?
That is correct, as far as John and Nikki, if you want to. John or Nikki?
Madam President, that would be, I think, a purchasing question. They actually did the computations.
Okay. John is correct. I'm sorry, I couldn't get off of mute. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm actually looking at the bid just to make sure that I'm not telling the councilman wrong. And forgive me, it is the $38.
Okay, well, I'm good, as long as, as long as documentation is there, so we're not sued at some point.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, with that clarification, I make more, I move that we approve the consent agenda item as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of Consent Agenda Item A, receipt of bids to provide painting services for the Facilities Maintenance Department. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frazier?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you all. Next, we have public hearing. Terry, are you on for that? Terry Crowe?
Yes, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Can we go to the next slide, please? Our public hearing is PZRRUDD19-0001. The petitioner is Southfield Community Renewal Corporation. The subject property is located at 18330 George Washington, on the northeast corner of George Washington and Continental. Existing zoning is R4, and the rezoning request is to create a residential unit development district. Next slide. Here's a close-up of existing conditions. The building on the left is existing school that's been expanded over the years. And the rectangular building on the right is the temporary school building that was constructed when it was a charter school. Next slide. When considering residential unit development districts, we look at recognizable benefits, minimum size, use of the public services, compatibility with the future land use plan, economic impact, usable open space, unified control, and legal documentation. Next slide. We also consider development standards. Is it, is it the proposed project in performance with the RUDD concept? Is it compatible with adjacent uses? Is there protection of natural environment? Is there compatibility with the future land use plan? And is it in compliance with the applicable regulations? Next slide. Again, as stated, the current zoning and the future land use are compatible with the requested rezoning of moderate density, single-family. Next slide. Phase one is proposed to renovate the existing school facility into 18 residential condominium units, and the removal of the portable structure along with lawn restoration on the east portion of the property. Proposes nine one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and three-bedroom units. Phase two will consist of the construction of 11 two-story, two-family, side-by-side residential units, equalling 22 units, and the total development as proposed in two phases would create 40 condominium residential units. Next slide. Here is a landscape plan showing how the full master development plan for the site would be built out over subsequent phases. Next slide. And again, under phase one, is just the focus on renovating the existing school site and building new two-car garages to support the 18 units, as well as some common amenities, such as a picnic shelter, and removal of the temporary school building on the east and restoring eastern portion of the property to lawn. Next slide. And with that, we have Mr. John Abella, architect representing the applicant, and he will go through the remaining of the presentation, as well as introduce his development team. And after the public hearing, we'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. But we wanted to address an issue that has been raised previously regarding traffic. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Abella to take over the presentation, and again, I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that'll be fine.
Good evening. My name is John Abella. I'm the Director of Design for SDG Associates. Our firm has been around since 1964. We are the oldest minority-owned firm in the state of Michigan. Oldest, I should say, architecturally, firm in the state of Michigan. And we just are grateful to be a part of this transformative project. Along with me tonight, we have Corey Moffett, who is with the Southfield Community Renewal Corporation, Patricia DiMarco from Spalding de Decker, civil engineers and landscape architects, David DeVukai, who is with the Contour Group, and Wesley Sims from SDG Associates. First of all, this project means a great deal to so many people, and we've heard the impassioned voices of so many people in the city of Southfield and in the neighborhood adjacent to the, to the property. It is our hope, and it's our wish, and it's our intent to take this existing 1928 beautiful school and embellish it, and the 1955 addition, and make it more adaptively reused to really make it in harmony with the, with the 1928 addition. Along with that, we're going to balance the site. We want to remove the existing temporary classroom building. Now, that was there, and many of you have seen this. It's in a state of disrepair.
John, can I, can I pause for a second and ask the slides to go back one slide while you're doing your opening comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. The, the, let me just gather my thoughts again. The, the eastern portion of the site where the temporary unit are located, temporary classroom units are located currently, we have, we have a drainage problem there, kind of an animal infestation problem there, even on a very, very dry day. As you, as you walk where the old playground used to be, I mean, you have to wear waders, basically, because the way that the site is, is graded currently. In, in the phase one of the project, which you see here on the screen, we plan on balancing that eastern portion of the site, and at least making a beautiful green, green space, getting all the infrastructure in place, and allowing the site to drain properly. That being said, if we could go to the next slide, please, and I'd like to introduce Tricia DiMarco from Spalding de Decker, just to take you through quickly the traffic counts that we have calculated for the proposed. Trish, are you there?
Trish, you might be on mute. Can you check your, your microphone, please?
She's not on mute. She just put herself on mute, but she wasn't on mute. I'm going to unmute her right now. She's unmuted. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
There we go. Can you hear me? Okay, so we ran through some initial traffic counts based on community feedback to look at the traffic impacts of the new development relative to the previous school use. And as you can see on the screen, you know, the previous school use at or near capacity with an estimated 286 students, this development is, you know, far less, significantly less trips generated on the weekday trips, and over the day, and not in as acute of a window of time, peak window of time. So when you look at potential traffic backups relative to a school this.
Trish, we lost you. Trish, we lost you at the end there. Maybe, maybe turn off your camera. Maybe the bandwidth is an issue.
Okay, so if you can hear me now, I was just saying that it's important to note that the types of trips generated by residential housing are much, absorbed throughout the day more significantly than a charter school or a school condition where you receive a high number of your trips at a peak rate, and the potential for backups in the school condition are significantly higher. So not only does the proposed development reduce the number of weekday trips, it also absorbs those trips throughout the day.
Could we go to the next slide, please? So you could see from this that, you know, you have a student population. Actually, it was more about 500 students, that I was told. So you could see that there was a significant amount of traffic from the, from having it as a, as a school use, and how much it's going to be reduced. And that's what you see in green when it, when it becomes attached, single-family residential, and even a lower percentage when it's multifamily low-rise, which is what we have in the, in the condo units. The next slide, please? So here is a rendering of the, looking at the existing 1928 historically significant architecture with, with the adjacent 1955 addition. But if you'll notice, the ribbon windows are gone. There's, there's more brick infill. We tried to make it more sympathetic with the, with the 1928 original structure. And that was part of our task in all of this, was to make it more harmonious with the historical structure. Can we go to the next slide, please? And this is actually looking at it from the, from the north, where we have 18 garages. They're actually in four buildings. These are all private garages for the 18 units. So each, each unit within the condo development gets a two-car garage. And our, our thought there is that potentially, these, these may be empty nesters. We don't, we don't, we don't know for sure, but we anticipate that the population would, would want two-car garages. And we also incorporate two-car garages in the single-family attached, which you'll see in a moment. But what I want to illustrate is the fact that we tried to keep the architecture in harmony on all sides of this development, not just on the key portion in the, in the front, which is the 1928 historic structure. Can we go to the next slide, please? Again, these are, the, these are renderings just showing the, the original portion of the school, and then what, what we've done to the windows in the, in the 1955 portion of the school. We went to punch windows to make it more in harmony with the 1928 portion. The next slide, please? And these also illustrate that fact. The next slide, please? So here we're looking at the McKinley School building as it's proposed as single-family residents that are condominiums. We have the smallest unit at approximately 960 square feet, and the largest unit at just over 2,500 square feet. And there's a couple things that I want to say about these units, in fact, all the units. These are all for sale units. These are not for rent. Again, each one is going to be purchased by a homeowner. We estimate the value of the units within, within this building at, starting at around $219,000 for the smallest unit on the, on the ground floor. And the larger units, which are the three that are in the current gymnasium, ranging in price from $420,000 to $450,000. Again, a substantial investment. Can we go to the second slide or next slide, please? These units are also able to be adaptively fitted to become ADA units with minor modifications. We, the door widths are, are all already set up for this, for this expanded width. And what you see really, it's mainly in the, in the bathroom area that we have to expand in order to make it ADA compliant. Next slide, please? And the same holds true for the, for the second floor of the adaptively reused McKinley School. Again, these are, these are for sale units ranging in price from about $259,000. Again, these are four sale units ranging in price from about two hundred and fifty-nine thousand to about four hundred and fifty thousand. Next slide, please? So what you're looking at here is the renovated existing kindergarten. You know, the building currently has this beautiful tile work around the fireplace and around the fountains. We want to maintain that. We've got these really beautiful sand paintings on the upper portion of the wall. Those are going to be preserved as well. And then we're going to try to use as much of the existing woodwork as possible, repaired where needed, to really create this beautiful common room. Next slide, please? So here's an example of a typical living room within the McKinley School. The units have the option to have fireplaces, built-in bookcases, and you see the really large and gracious windows. So what we are standing in, what is effectively the kitchen, looking towards the living dining area. The ceilings are roughly twelve-foot-nine, and it's a really beautiful space. Next slide, please? And here we are looking back towards the kitchen areas. And there's a variety of options for the kitchen. This one doesn't show the upper cabinets. That can be over that island space. We have that option. This one, we just obviously left it open just to show you the breadth of the kitchen with the twelve-foot-nine ceilings. Next slide, please? Oh, this is a redundant slide. Next slide, please? And in keeping with the architecture of the existing school, that's what we are proposing for all of the garages. And we also have a pavilion element that, when we get back to the site plan, I will illustrate. Next slide, please? We also have the single-family attached units that we are proposing as a Phase Two. They range in size from about eighteen-hundred-and-eighty square feet to a little over two thousand square feet. And they're going to range in price from three hundred and eighty to about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Again, these are for sale units. These are not rental units. Next slide, please? And hopefully you can read these. So we've got entryway, living, dining, powder room, and a really gracious kitchen on the ground floor with an attached two-car garage in the rear of the building. And then on the upper floors, they're all three-bedroom units. Some have balconies, some don't, but they've all got two additional full bathrooms upstairs with a master all-suite. Laundry room is located on the second floor. And then we have the option to make some of the bedrooms slightly smaller so that we can have balconies. Next slide, please? And then these are just more options for those units. This one just happens to have a turret, which really makes for a really neat kind of live-work space in the master bedroom. Next slide, please? I mean, this really kind of sums up what we're trying to do from an architectural and urban planning point of view. Create harmony, create a sense of presence and neighborhood, and also be a good neighbor to the residents. Corey, is there anything that you'd like to add to my comments?
Yes. Hang on one second. Let me just turn my video on here. Hold on.
Hi, Corey. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Corey Moffett. I'm the president of the Southfield Community Renewal Board. And as a member of the board and also a resident of Southfield for the last four years, I wanted to sort of express some of my personal feelings about this type of project. I'm originally from Northern California, where these types of developments are very well received by the community right now. For years, we've gone and torn down buildings like this. And now we're going around trying to save them and trying to refurbish them as much as we can. My wife and I relocated from Birmingham about four years ago when we decided to retire and moved to Southfield. This is the type of development that we would have loved to have had the opportunity to take a look at at that particular time. I've had the opportunity to speak to several people in the community, some of the residents even in Washington Heights, who are very enthused about this type of development because they don't want to see an eyesore in the neighborhood. They want to see something that's actually able to be utilized. It's going to affect them and their home values in the neighborhood. And because we do have issues with hazmat, like we were saying earlier, with the bungalow temporary buildings that need to be addressed, there's standing water issues. There is some infestation with some rodents. All these things can easily be addressed once we go ahead and start leveling out that area. But looking from the historic standpoint, we have a beautiful historic nineteen-twenty structure that people would love to be able to live in. And as we all know, Southfield has a very aging demographic. And we have the responsibility not only to support our communities like Washington Heights, but also support the city and the community as a whole to be able to bring a diverse community back into Southfield. We need to be able to bring younger millennials in, empty nesters, you know, people who are looking to downsize. And this is the ideal type of development that Southfield should have in our portfolio, be able to bring those type of people into the neighborhood. I mean, from my standpoint, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to focus on, you know, bringing some new residents into the community and also enhancing Washington Heights as a beautiful neighborhood that it is right now. I know there's been a lot of concerns from talking to various members of the community lately, but I feel that it's a very positive element to be able to move forward with this to make sure that we not only restore the historic standpoint, but also be able to, you know, bring in some beautiful community buildings in terms of residential that could really support the neighborhood. That's about all I have to say right now, but I'm very much supportive behind this as well as several of the Washington Heights people I've spoken to in the last several weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. I'd like to introduce Wesley Sims from SDG Associates to sort of conclude this portion of the meeting. Wesley?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of City Council. My name is Wesley Sims. I am the Chief Executive and Operations Officer for SDG Associates. I really just want to add and reinforce, you know, the pleasure that we have of being able to be in front of you this evening and our excitement with the project. As John mentioned, we believe it to be incredibly transformative, you know, as well as uplifting, you know, from both economic and social factors. So we again appreciate all of your time and again appreciate the opportunity to be here to present to you this evening.
Thank you, Wesley. Terry, that concludes our portion. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, John, as we receive comments, just jot some notes down that we can be able to respond to in addition to anything that the council may have. Can I just see the next slide, please? So, Madam Chair, at this point, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, we'll be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments and presentation. This is the public hearing for the PZRRUDD nineteen-dash-zero-zero-zero-one. And we were asked, I would like to ask that due to some of the technical difficulties that we have, if you would please mute your line when you're not speaking. And when you are ready to speak, please do a star three that will allow our clerk to acknowledge you, and we will keep some kind of order so that we can take people in the order in which they raise their hands. So star three is a form of raising your hand for recognition and comment. But with that, I will now declare the public hearing open and I'd like to hear from anyone that would like to speak to this particular topic.
Madam President, we're going to go with the first comment. The prefix is seven-six-one is the start of their phone number.
Seven-six-one? That might be me.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Honorable City of Southfield Council Members. My name is Kathleen McNellis. I'm at PO Box two-four-seven-four, Southfield, four-eight-zero-three-seven. As a member of Southfield Historical Society and a Southfield resident for well over thirty years, I have watched vacancy and neglect blight beautiful buildings of historic significance and negatively affect their surrounding residential neighborhoods. I support the McKinley Place condominium community development. I recognize the historical significance of this nearly one-hundred-year-old McKinley School Building, especially as it relates to Mary Elizabeth Thompson. Mary Thompson was an educator, a visionary, and a community builder. Her great-grandparents and her grandparents were pioneer settlers in what was then known as Southfield Township. Mary Thompson's family organized the Covenanter Church. The Covenanters and their worship space were rooted in abolishing slavery. Mary's ancestors helped freedom seekers from Kentucky, Tennessee, and Missouri along the Underground Railroad by providing a waystation within the community and a shelter within the Covenanter Church. Today, that church is known as the Reformed Presbyterian Church, and it's located just north of our public library. McKinley School stands today as a testament to the education, the vision, and community-building values of Mary Thompson. Mary Thompson was McKinley School's first principal and teacher. Her values are our values as residents and as a city. McKinley School building and surrounding property will be repurposed to provide forty upscale condominium homes and homeowners to our community. It'll preserve an important piece of our city's history and values, values that we all share. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Madam President, the prefix of seven-four-three?
Hi, my name is Marlon Hall. I'm a resident of Washington Heights, and I just want to voice my opinion that I'm against this. I prefer my neighborhood to stay single-family homes. The traffic will be an issue, but past that, I like this neighborhood the way it is. I'd like to see that building repurposed for something else and to sit inside of the neighborhood instead of condos that normally have access from Main Street instead of having to drive through the neighborhood. I'm totally against this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, we have prefix of seven-nine-eight, seven-nine-eight prefix.
I think that's me. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bruce Morris. I live at one-eight-five-eight-one Capital. I just want to voice my concern, saying that I'm against this rezoning request. This area is already zoned for single-family, so housing can go up as is. This is all about numbers. I mean, let's just keep it real. This is all about numbers and it's about putting up more homes, which means more homes that can be sold. It's not about saving a historic building. I appreciate the history lesson that was just given. But if you were about saving this school and saving this building, you can do this without putting up those extra condo units. We are, in our community, we are for the beautification area. We want to see something done with that, but we don't want to see a bunch of condos put up in our area. We are against that. It's all about numbers. And it's a shame that we have such personal involvement of the mayor in this rezoning request. I mean, he's brought in all these experts to speak about the history and Southfield and what it's going to do as far as increasing our values. No one in our neighborhood will believe that you're going to sell a condo, a one-bedroom condo for two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars and nine hundred square feet at a minimum. That's just not going to happen. Most of our homes in that area aren't even two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So why would we believe that a condo is going to sell for that amount? Lastly, I would say, as City Council members, I ask, is it your job to represent the citizens of Southfield or the mayor of Southfield? We would hope that you would represent our citizens of Washington Heights and deny this rezoning request. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, good evening, Madam Council President. My name is Pamela Gerald, PO Box one-fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven-dash-zero-one-five-five. My telephone number is two-four-eight-three-four-six-zero-four-three-nine. I am appalled with what the former councilwoman's husband just said. It's very demeaning and insulting to the mayor. And I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Morris. When your wife was on City Council, why didn't she or you come up with an idea for a building that has been vacant for six years? We have had transient homeless people living in the school. It's been vacant for six years. This is the same neighborhood where your kids have played and rode their bikes for six years. Did you have a problem with the people living in the building? Did you make them a part of the community? Did you even try to feed them and make sure that they were warm in that vacant building with no utilities? I would have to say probably not. Now, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I have a house not too far from there. And I can tell you, for a project like this, it is only going to enhance your property. I can tell you, your property has not grown in value with a building that's been vacant for six years. I'm still trying to figure out, did you have a problem with it being vacant for six years? And if you did, why didn't you come up with a project that would make a difference in your immediate community? We want to do what's right for the city and for the residents because the residents are at the top of the organizational chart. The mayor, City Council, and all of the other people that work for the city worked for the taxpayers. That would be you, Mr. Morrison, and me. What we need to do is stop trying to make this political. Every single person that is supporting the opponent running against the current mayor is singing the same song. Is it the song with the right lyrics to say, "We welcome development? We welcome projects? We welcome places where younger families can come in and raise their kids?" Or are we going to make this political to give a candidate a platform against an incumbent? Stop the insanity and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, prefix six-nine-three?
Yes, this is Tanya Page Coleman at eighteen-four-three-nine George Washington Drive. What I would like to say is that, for the lady that just spoke, I don't know what you feel about nine hundred square-feet condos sitting next to you because I am a real estate agent for eleven years, and they are not going to sell at two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And I know that as well. What I propose for that historical building is a community center that we all can enjoy, that the seniors can come, the children can come. We would also like to see single-family homes, not condos. And I'm sorry that you guys have a problem with that, but because you don't live over here, and I have, again, been in this business of real estate for eleven years, and I know that nine hundred square feet is not going to sell for two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Okay, it's not going to happen. So we would like to, again, see single-family residents in this community to build the community and beautify it. It definitely needs that. We don't need those condos in that building. That building should be a community center that we all can enjoy and appreciate. It would stop all of that traffic that comes through here from Continental and George Washington and Capital. My property sits diagonally to that school, and the traffic is terrible already. People come speeding through here. I can barely get out of my driveway because people are speeding down the street. And that's without any development. And I am definitely for development, but not those condos. I'm just not for it. Because I know, contrary to what you are I'm just not for it, because I know, contrary to what you are trying to tell us, they're not going to sell for that amount of money. And with a lower price point, we'll bring a different type of residence. And that is my opinion, uh, personally and professionally. And thank you very much for this time.
Thank you.
Madam President, at this time, we don't have any other individuals that have their hand raised to speak for, uh, during this public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we just got one. We just got a whole bunch. One second. Prefix, uh, two one nine. Prefix two one nine.
Okay, hi. This is, uh, Darla Van Hoy, two three eight eight six Beach Road, Southfield. Um, I'm president of the Southfield Historical Society, and I heartily applaud the zoning and planning department in pursuing this type of project. The adaptive reuse of our historic properties and buildings is always preferable to any kind of demolition and adding to our landfills. Um, this pro, this project also would be preferable to what has been deteriorating since the charter school left. I live in a nineteen oh five farmhouse, and I am pleased that the city wants to preserve these types of structures. Uh, I hope that the city council approves this zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, we have, uh, prefix, one second. Madam President, can we also ask the callers if you've already spoken, uh, to press star three to put your hand down? That would be extremely helpful.
Uh, yes. If you've already spoken at this, um, public hearing, would you please press star three so that you would no longer have your hand raised? That would help, help us tremendously. Thank you.
Okay, we do have, uh, prefix five two zero.
Hi, uh, my name is Gwendolyn Jefferson, and I'm at one eight four four zero George Washington. And I did send an email into, uh, the president and all of the council members on all of my concerns, but I won't, so I won't repeat them all. But, um, I'm right across the street. I'm definitely not on board with the traffic study, because I live here, and I've been living here for twenty-seven years, right across from that school. And I know for sure that the traffic can be horrendous at times on Southfield Road. Someone said before that, uh, with this new proposal, the residents would come out and head east on George Washington to Southfield. Well, we all know, if anybody's ever been on Southfield Road, it's a beast at certain times of the day. So what they do, they turn around and they come right back around Continental headed north. So it's going, and that's just with the current traffic and the cut-throughs that comes through here, speeding. So I can't even imagine with something like what they're talking about putting across the street, how many cars are there? And you can't say that, uh, just because the person is an empty nester, that they're just going to stay in the house. They're going to leave, and that's going to be more traffic. I mean, to me, it's like common sense. But again, I, I sent my email to all the council people expressing myself, and I hope you take into consideration, I just want single-family homes over there, not condos or those duplexes. Because side by side, in my opinion, that's a duplex. That's not a single-family attached home. I've never heard of that. But anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you for, uh, for listening.
Thank you.
Madam President, that does conclude all the individuals wanting to speak at this public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, we got one more. Hold on. Prefix three three three.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Betty Smith. I'm at one eight six one one Capital Drive. I'm about three doors down the street from the school. It, it is a beautiful wind green, but it's duplexes. We are a single-family unit subdivision, and we just wanted to stay that way. We're not trying to block progress, but what's fair is fair. We are right down the street from this, and we know the type of traffic that it's going to increase by. And the people who's making these decisions, they don't live here. You don't see what we see. You don't see our tranquility of how it is in this neighborhood. It's a wonderful neighborhood. We're just trying to maintain our neighborhood. People are commenting that who don't live in this area, because they don't care. We care, that's why we're here. And I don't understand why we have to go through all of this drama to have just a continuation of what we bought into, which is single-family units. And I really hope council would take a look at what's going on, and at least if you have to pass it, decrease the number of units that's in there. It's four acres of land, which originally they told us it was five acres of land. Now it's four acres of land. And so the density study is probably off, and forty units in four acres of land? That's a lot of people crammed into the, a small space, and it's like the city of its own. And it's a small, it's a big city in a very tiny area. Can it at least you rethink that and cut down the number of units that's going in the area? The traffic is going to be horrendous in this area. And the only thing that's going to happen is going to be complaint after complaint after complaint about the traffic, the speeding traffic and all of the, uh, excess people, the noise, just, it's, it's going to be a lot on us. And if you must do something, if you can't cut down the number of units in there, at least put a cul-de-sac up, so we won't be affected by the traffic. And they'll have their own little city, and they'll be all off to themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
I don't want to say it as someone else. I'm just waiting. Give it a little bit, few more seconds just because of the live delay, Madam President, and then I don't believe it's any more callers.
Okay, well, hearing none. I will now declare the public hearing closed. Uh, Terry?
Uh, yes.
Did you want to read something before I go to council, or you want me to go to council?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, we'd be have to answer questions first. Thank you.
Okay. And then I will start with you, uh, Councilwoman Banks.
Um, thank you. I, I think all of my questions have been answered. Um, to the residents that are listening, we've received like a lot of emails from you, and I know I have responded to most of them. And I'd just like to reiterate that this is not the mayor's project. This is a decision that council's either going to vote up and approve or vote down and not approve. And, um, several letters that were submitted about, um, the mayor's roundabout, the mayor's cul-de-sac, this and that. This is not about the mayor, um, installing any of these items. You know, this is to come before the city council, you know, also the planning commission also, and then the city council to either approve what we have seen or what we haven't seen. Personally, I've been over to that site. I've toured it. I'm, I'm surprised the residents find it acceptable. I would not want the present facility in my backyard. And I think the proposed plans are going to complement, and if not, add added value to the neighborhood. And I do believe they will sell. There's a lot of young adults, and there are a lot of empty nesters who are looking for places like this. So I have no further comments to make on this project. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Well, yes, I have a couple of questions. Um, Terry, at the last meeting, I wanted to, um, get the proposed increasing taxable value, and if you were going to check with the, um, assessor, did we get a, did we get a number of, uh, the proposed?
Yeah, yes. Let me just check my notes. Um, sorry, this... I believe that the, um, based on the city's assessors' review, the, um, estimated annual city tax dollars is approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand and a annual admin fee of thirty-two hundred for a total estimated, uh, value of a hundred and forty-eight thousand three fifty-eight when fully built out based on our current millage rates.
Okay.
So the, um, you know, that, that's, that's the assessment from the city assessor, um, based on a taxable value of five point two million dollars when fully built out.
Okay. And also, um, and I know you gave us some numbers last week that dealt with, when it's fully developed and the number of automobiles that are, let's say, you have extra number of, um, parking spots currently, uh, and what would be the max number of cars, uh, to fill out those?
Well, ag- again, I mean, I mean, if you just want raw numbers, if there's forty units, that's eighty cars. What really is more in, important is when you look at the traffic study, that single-family units typically generate nine point five five trips per day. Uh, these types of units are in the five to seven, um, trips per day, typically because they're not going to work, um, in the morning, which comes as one trip, and coming back is another trip. There's just fewer trips for this type of residential living. There may be more units, and the net increase may, may be slightly, um, greater. Um, so it's not really, it's not pertinent to look at just number of cars, but really based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers' average daily traffic counts, A M P M peaks, and how that, those, those trips are spread out throughout the day during the week and on weekends. That, that's really more germane to the discussion about impact on traffic.
Okay.
But the net, net number of cars is eighty if, if all, if everything's built with a two-car garage.
Okay. The next question, and this was touched on too. Uh, given the number of bedrooms, this, this is raw numbers, I'm looking at just raw numbers, uh, top of mind. Uh, given the number of bedrooms that are being built, what are the number of people? Just raw numbers.
Well, our, our, what, again, some of these bedrooms are going to be used as office space or, um, craft rooms. But what we, what is more pertinent is looking at the average household size in the city, which has been shrinking, and it's around two point one to two point three. And these, again, these types of units are either going to be young professionals, family forming, or empty nesters. I'm not saying that some, uh, there might not be a young family that moves into one of the attached single-family and has, has a baby. Um, but these are less likely to have large family, young children. And if anything, these homes would be gateway homes, uh, for family forming that may buy into the community later on as they have children. And John, you can, you can correct me or, or, but my analysis of who would be living in here are maybe singles, uh, couples, family forming, or empty nesters, one or two on average per household. Maybe slightly higher if you factor in a, a young child.
I agree with that, Terry. Exactly. That's what, that's what we're figuring, um, at the, based on, based on the current demographics.
Okay, given the, then given the current demographics and our projections, you know, utilizing, uh, developers' arithmetic, given this population, we're giving this location, how many people?
Wow. Some, somewhere, you know, eighty, eighty to, to, eighty to a hundred if, if they have children. Eight, uh, you know, again, two, two persons per unit is eighty people.
Okay.
If that's point one, that's another, you know, eight, eight, nine people. So it's eighty, ninety. I mean, that's just an estimate.
No, I, I use a figure. I'm, I'm just from my, my prior, prior day in dealing with, uh, with numbers. I know you have to use a figure to start, start out with something. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Two point one, two point three, eighty, eighty approximately people. Like sometimes, that's, that's the best you can do, uh, from a, uh, uh, estimate standpoint. So I'm good. That's, that's what I wanted to know, and I think, uh, so that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Frazier?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, uh, Council Lady Banks did make a, a statement about the mayor, and I want to add to that same thing. Uh, people that spoke about this is a mayor's project, it's not the mayor's project, but the mayor does have a responsibility, and he's taking it on as a personal responsibility to make sure that Southfield is the kind of city that we all want to live in. And you may or may not know this, but the mayor does not have a vote in anything that happens at the city council level. The, the mayor does not vote on anything. But, uh, so I want that clearly understood. Uh, and the mayor, uh, has written three different books on the history of the city of Southfield. So it's not like the mayor's doing this all for himself. He knows more, really knows more about this city than probably anyone, and he cares about this city. But one of the things that I'd really like to say is, I've been on, I was on council for a lo, long time, and a lot of things came to the council, and the residents came, and they talked about, "Oh, we don't want this. We don't want that. We don't want this." One of the things that came before the council was a developer wanted to build condos adjacent to the neighborhood that I live in. And there were people in my neighborhood that knew that I was on council, and they didn't want these, uh, condos built in our neighborhood. And they were huge. Condos are huge. And one of the reasons they said they didn't want them is because it dwarfed the houses in our neighborhood and that it would reduce the value of our houses. So I was on council. I had to vote yes or no. I thought it was a great project. I voted yes. I, and the condos got built. In fact, one of the condos was so large that it had to have a special rule that it could exceed the height restrictions, and so we passed that. Today, nobody even knows those councils, those condos are there. Nobody pays any attention. People in the condos come and go. We come and go, uh, and it's not a problem. Before they were built, everybody was kind of upset that, "Oh, no, you're going to bring these condos and reduce the cost of our, or the value of our houses." Uh, another thing in our neighborhood, not in our, the neighborhood I live in, but in our area, was, uh, school that was, uh, it's an elementary school, but it's a school of choice. And everyone wanted to go to that school, so there was a lot of competition for the traffic. It was terrible when it first started, because they didn't realize that, the school system didn't realize that many, uh, people were going to, uh, have picked that school as a school of choice. And it took some time to work it out. It's fine now. The, they've learned how to manage the traffic, and it's fine. But it was, it was a problem for a while, and now it's fine. I think that this project is a good project. It's a reuse of a a building that could be torn down. But it could be saved and turned into a beautiful building. And even though they're condos, after a while, they're just people living in homes. Going to work, coming home, go to the grocery store, coming homes and they don't turn, it's not. Uh a big concern. So uh I'm in favor of this project and I won't talk anymore, I've talked too long, too long now, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh thank you, um I mean, I I'll start off by saying I I I'm also. For this uh for this project, I think um this is definitely something we need in the city. Um more housing, I don't think anyone, even the people who are against the um against this particular project or, you know, I guess how more housing in the city. Um one of the callers, uh uh the woman who's a realtor, she she brought up um in her opinion that. It might be issue, it might be difficult to sell condos at this size, one bedroom, nine hundred square feet. Uh for this price, for the price for two uh fifty-nine, and I was just wondering where does that number come from? Um if somebody could speak on that.
Uh uh if if you're asking how do we estimate um the two fifty-nine value?
Yes.
Uh I I'm gonna speak for the assessor and I'll let the developer speak uh for their market study, but they are similar. Our assessor looked at comparable sales in the neighborhood of other other um homes. And they typically look at over the last six months. Then they also, he also looked at comparable sales of similar type of condominium units. And they, he comes up with a mean or average square foot price. Then um he multiplies that uh by the proposed square footage and then he also factors in other types of amenities. And I believe I um in in a quick analysis. That existing single-family homes are are selling at a price point around a hundred to a hundred and four dollars per square foot. And the new construction of this type is in the hundred and fifteen up to a hundred and ninety-five dollar range. I with an average mean of a hundred and fifty-five dollars per square foot for the new attached single family. And I'm probably in that one seventy-five average uh for the condominiums. Within the McKinley School from a low of one thirty-five up to one ninety-five. So that's how they come up with um proposed market rate. And I'll, as you know, nationally, there's a shortage. Of housing stock which has further pushed the rates higher, so his values are conservative based on. Um you know, past sales, not looking at the hot market now. And and I'll ask John if his team would like to add anything to my observations of the city assessor's valuation.
Thank you, Terry, uh we concur, I just want to make a clarification. The smallest unit we have is nine hundred and forty-three square feet, there are, the the smallest typical unit is about nine hundred and sixty square feet. And again, uh we asked for the for our development partner to look at the market value estimates. Within the within the within the development and they looked at the numbers and again, that's how these numbers were derived, very, very, very similar to your. Observation and and conclusions and we can also state that the housing market is raging currently. And we're seeing prices even even from three or four months ago where where the cost per square foot to purchase. A residence is well over two hundred dollars a square foot, some some two hundred twenty-five. Dollars per square foot, which is about what we're estimating here, somewhere between two hundred, two hundred twenty-five dollars a a square foot, but you also have to look at amenities. And 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 these units are looking at having gourmet kitchens, nicer nicer appliances, nicer nicer finishes and more amenities. So that also tips the scale a bit, you know, and and we're dealing with a savvy developer and and. Investment group who who knows the market and I I'm only reading the numbers that they're that they were giving to me. Thank you.
The the other thing I I I'd like to comment, because we we dealt with the same issue on the smaller units at Arbor Lofts. That council recently approved is that people who choose to live in these types of units. Can live in slightly smaller square footages because they have the common amenities such as the community space. Gymnasiums, outdoor space that makes up for um maybe the need for larger square footage if you were in a single-family home. The other uh comment, I know there's always a lot of confusion or misunderstanding about condominiums, which is just another type of ownership. But um individuals own the unit that they reside in. And then all the outside areas and common areas are owned in joint, divided by the number of of condominium units. And instead of forty separate people cutting their grass, they will all pay a fee and have a company. That cuts all the grass at the same time, plows the roads at the same time, clears clears the sidewalk, um provides irrigation, landscaping and in general maintenance. So they they tend to be better maintained than if you had forty separate sites. And again, just just some issues that factor into the price point and factor into the markability of of these types of units.
Okay, um I mean it it. I am in my day job, I am working on tools right now to address a number of the housing issues that we're facing here in the state. Um I mean, it's it's definitely a problem. Um and I did, I'm always um happy to see that we're, we here in Southfield at least are doing what we can to. Address some of the shortages that we see um. I know this issue uh of the traffic keeps coming up too um. And I don't, I'm 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 sure there are people who speak down the street. Um it is not, it's not something that is unique to this street. It ha- it happens, we get complaints about it all the time um in various parts of the city. Um Terry, you mentioned something about, I think it was speed tables, and that's be about speed tables. Um I think that was a term um. Is that something we are looking at? Um doing something with with those throughout the city um or in other neighborhoods or even in this neighborhood?
Well, um we we did have our first speed table as part of the mixed-use development on Ever- Lower Evergreen. Where we had a dead-end street that uh would have required a wall to to close off the neighborhood from Evergreen, which would limit. Emergency access, uh public service access, uh. Snow, snow plowing, garbage pickup, police fire response. So in that particular case where we had a dead-end street, we uh worked with the fire department to create a speed table. Because we certainly don't want to have our couple hundred thousand dollar fire vehicle bottom out and cause damage by going over a speed bump. I did have a conversation with the city engineer. And what she stated is that if if council would like to pursue this, we have to look at it on a citywide basis. And do a comprehensive analysis of the feasibility of speed tables or speed bumps. We we have an obligation, at least in residential areas, to maintain a twenty-five mile per hour zone. So the design would have to afford the ability of to continue to to go travel at at twenty, twenty-five miles per hour. Uh limit speeding and not cause undue damage to public safety or reduce. The time for public safety to respond in 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 case of emergency. And uh the the last thing is, and again, if it's warranted and and council would like to move forward. If you do it in one neighborhood, you can bet to that uh all neighborhoods will, you know, look at this. And in other areas, we have used other methods for s- uh traffic calming such as roundabouts, such as speed um um bump outs. Parallel parking spaces actually reduce um speed on roads, street trees, uh sidewalks. So there are other um mitigation me- measures that could be implemented long-term to help reduce. Um speeding as well as traffic speed enforcement. So it's 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 not not an easy answer, uh it's something that we could continue to pursue and and bring all the departments together. And um based on council's preference. These are things that could be implemented in the future in the street, the the road right-ofways that the city controls. So we have had some preliminary discussions, but this is something that really goes beyond this development itself. It's it's a larger discussion that council needs to have for citywide issues.
Yeah, I I'm I'm absolutely in agreement with you on that, uh I know um. I've talked to uh Councilwoman Banks about this, um and she's the the chair of the Neighborhood Services Committee. Uh maybe this could be something that's on our agenda, but yeah, I I I'm I'm with you where. We should look at every um every tool at our disposal to to try to address this for for our residents. Um that's that's the uh, those are the only comments I have, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes, thank you, um you know, I've listened to the the comments this evening from the public hearing, I also listened to to the. Public hearing that was done with the planning commission and I understand everyone's concerns and. Um I think it's just because this is something new. That there's some concerns, there have been times the last month or so that I've driven by the property. Um into the parking lot of the school, there's there's trash, there's homeless people, there's, you know, even the trailers, just the there there's mold growing out of those uh. Trailers off to the side and I really think that this. Development will really enhance the neighborhood, I know that there's several people that already told me that they're ready to buy condos or even some of the houses. Um. Once they go up and I think that um this will. Enhance the neighborhood tremendously, enhance the city and and show people what can be done with a an adaptive reuse of an historical building. And I know there's a lot of other buildings in the city that uh are currently vacant and deteriorating and hopefully this will help encourage others to. Repurpose these buildings and I really think that this is, I think there's just the fear of the unknown. Um but having lived within a mile of this of this area my entire life. Um I definitely think that it will enhance the neighborhood and help the overall city, so I I definitely am in favor of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um mayor, did you have any comments for us tonight?
I have no comments.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh Terry, you want to read your?
Yeah, uh we could go to the next slide. So before I read my recommendation, again, um I just want to remind the council that. The creation of the residential unit development district was done in partnership with the school district the last time we updated the master plan. Uh they have six to twelve underutilized or vacant school buildings and sites. The city does not have a lot of undeveloped land, especially for residential. And it was for these reasons that we we created the residential unit development district to allow for the adaptive reuse, especially of historic schools. And to provide for the opportunity for new construction, slightly higher density, to help fund the preservation of these valuable resources. I've often said that for us to be competitive with an aging population and to attract or retain young. Family forming and young professionals, we needed to provide alternative housing options. And we have seen that every time we have a new housing product on the market, they sell quickly or there's a lot of interest before they're even built. This also meets our goal of sustainability. Um both, well, actually, economic, environmental and cultural sustainability. And that um Southfield has been on the forefront on on many um zoning. Uh regulations and opportunities and flexibility. When many of our suburban neighbors were holding the line on two and three-story development. Southfield took the bold step of allowing almost unlimited office buildings and we would not be the uh center of employment. Today, if um our forefathers and and other elected officials. Took the stance of owing allowing three-story office buildings, I I'm looking out my window at Town Center. Town Square uh and other um large office buildings that really have provided the uh an economic balance. To residential properties and create an employment center in our community and for all these reasons. Planning Department, the Planning Commission has recommended favorable consideration. This is consistent with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan. Change to R U D D would be compatible with and similar to uh existing adjacent zoning. And provide a buffer between the single family and the commercial and mixed-use development on Southfield and Ten Mile Road. The proposal is in accordance with the standards for rezoning the property to R U D D regulations as I stated. And it's subject to uh the final McKinley School R U D D Development Agreement being finalized between the city planner, the city attorney and the developer. Each phase of the development shall be commenced with an eighteen-month schedule unless the phasing plan has been provided. Review and approval of the final detailed phase two development shall be required. And unless waived or modified by the development agreement, all the dimensional requirements except for. Shall be incorporated into the development agreement as well as maintaining twenty-five percent open space. On and they already meet um access to public thoroughfare, I'm not sure if there's one more slide. Okay, if you could go back one, please. And it's for these reasons, Madam Chair, that we recommend favorable approval of the proposal to then to Unit Development District.
Um thank you, Terry, uh I just was uh texting one of our uh residents, Pamela Gerald wanted to go on record that she was in favor of this project. She didn't get a chance to mention that when she was speaking earlier, uh so um I wanted that. I told her that I would make sure that we uh let everyone know that she said she is in favor of this project. Um thank you for your uh recommendation, Terry, uh council, are we ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
I moved that we have. Move. P Z R R U D D nineteen dash zero 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 one. Resort.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier for the approval of P Z R R U D D. Nineteen dash zero zero one rezoning regret request to re- to create a residential unit development district. By the S F Community Renewal Corporation. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Can you see the project?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Thank you, council, we also have the ordinance to introduce.
Madam Chair, I'm Brightwell, I make a mo- I move that we introduce ordinance number.
I make a mo- I move that we introduce ordinance number one seven four one.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier for the introduction of ordinance number one seven four one. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, with your permission, I just, uh, if you would allow Mr. Abella to just say a closing remark.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First of all, thank you for supporting the project. I just want to clarify a few things for the, for the residents. The actual acreage of the site is four point seven nine acres. Again, these are single family residences. And someone made the comment that we don't, we don't care about this project or, or, or this neighborhood. And that can't be further from the truth. You know, we, we looked at this, we scrutinized the building, we studied the building and we studied the neighborhood well before we had proposed anything of the sort on the, on the site. We had multiple meetings with the, uh, members. I believe it was a total of like eleven public forums back and forth. And we had, we had reduced the number of, of condo, of, of single family residences. We also added more green space as well as taking care of storm detention. And again, I just want to say thank you to everyone and we, we really did our best to enhance not only the existing school and adaptively reuse it, take that blighted building and, and remove it from the site, change the balance of the site so we wouldn't have any more drainage issues and just, you know, create a buffer zone frankly between the busier streets and, and the more dense residential neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, council, we have an ordinance to enact. May I have a motion? I have a motion to enact ordinance number one seven four oh.
Miss, uh, Madam President?
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to move that we approve ordinance, enact ordinance number seventeen forty-one. Sorry, seventeen.
Four zero.
Four, four.
Four zero.
Four zero. Thank you.
I support that.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell to enact ordinance number one seven four oh, the rezoning request of Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless to rezone, uh, seven point one three acres of land. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're at the agenda items for discussion and action portion for tonight. And the first item is item A, the purchase of elec- election forms and supplies.
Um, Madam President, to the honorable body, um, during this fiscal year, uh, the clerk's office, due to the high civic engagement of our residents, um, we went through more forms than normal with the, uh, record turn, virtual turnout. So we do have a sole source vendor approved by the state of Michigan in which, uh, we needed additional forms, but by charter, our latest invoice would exceed the ten thousand dollar threshold that, uh, the charter allows. So tonight I'm asking for, uh, permission to purchase election forms and supplies for sixty-three B AV secrecy sleeves in the amount of one thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents uh, for, uh, the, uh, city clerk's, uh, election forms, and this would come out of our, uh, city clerk's budget election division operating supplies.
Thank you. Um, the council, I'll start with you, um, Mr. Brightwell.
Yes, ma'am. I'm back. I'm sorry, um, you knew what was happening. Um, I, I have questions on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Uh, have my questions already answered.
Thank you.
I have no question.
Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions. I'm just glad that we have more civic involvement.
Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the action for this item, uh, council?
Councilwoman Banks? If we're ready, um, I, um, move that we authorize the city clerk to purchase election form and supplies um, secrecy envelopes from Printing Systems Incorporated of Taylor, Michigan.
Mandelbaum supports.
Thank you. It's been mo- moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the approval of the clerk to purchase election forms and supplies. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. Our next item is item B, which is the authorization agreement with Kimmy Horn Productions LLC.
Madam President?
Yes.
We are requesting that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute a contract with, uh, Kimmy Horn for the third, uh, Kimmy Horn concert scheduled for August thirteenth through fourteenth. Um, the event is known as the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival. Um, in addition, we're requesting the authorization of eighty-five hundred dollars in funds, uh, to be charged to the community promotions, uh, account.
Okay. Uh, council, uh, I'll start with you, Mr. Frazier.
Uh, I have no, uh, questions, but I absolutely support the Kimmy Horn Jazz concerts, concert.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No, no question, no questions for me on this. I'm, I too am very much looking forward to this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions for me. I'm looking forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I also am in favor, but I do have a few questions, please.
Yes.
In the write-up, it says that the city will be responsible to assist in generating sponsors. Could somebody elaborate? What does that mean, please, and how much money are we talking?
Uh, I can speak to that, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Um, my office will, uh, work with vendors. Um, that, as you know, uh, from past concerts, there were a number of vent, vendors along Evergreen Road. Those are the, uh, those are the revenues that, um, uh, are generated to uh, without pun, uh, pay for the generators, um, that, uh, were providing. Um, I would, uh, as long as I've got the floor up, I may just add, this is an identical contract. We're not changing, uh, proposing any changes to, uh, the last time this was before council. A partner in this, uh, was confirmed today is the South Hill Chamber of Commerce, which will be operating, um, a beer and wine tent. And, uh, I have not yet spoken to the Martin Luther King Task Force, but, uh, they were a partner, uh, as well in, in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, no, my questions were answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, no questions. My questions were just answered when the mayor spoke. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, may I have a motion?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to m- move that we authorize an agreement with Kimmy Horn Productions LLC.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Frazier for the approval of the authorization agreement with Kimmy Horn Productions. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes. Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, our next item is the authorization to purchase snow blowing, I'm sorry, snow plowing equipment.
Madam President, if I may, this is KT from the DPW.
Yes.
Uh, we're looking to purchase two pieces of equipment uh, to do the seven miles of city sidewalks that we're going to maintain.
Okay. Um, council, do we have any questions? Uh, I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, no questions for me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. The write-up indicated that, uh, the equipment purchased previously was found to be ineffective. Uh, what, what have we been doing for the last fifty years as far as snowing, um, you know, clearing sidewalks?
So last year was the, was the first year that we, um, that we did the sidewalks. Before that, we didn't, we didn't touch them. So it's, it's something that administration, DPW talked about lawsuits, stuff that's happened in other cities. So, um, we, we have a map, we have areas and we have seven miles that we are now maintaining.
So what did we purchase the last time that was ineffective?
So the DPW, um, I'll give you the short version. The director that used to work there bought two Kubotas. And a Kubota is a machine that, uh, has a cab that you ride inside. Um, his decision to buy that equipment was, that's what Parks and Recreation has. Um, they do bike paths and they do city halls. So the pile that's on there, um, goes from five foot to eight foot in, uh, in length. So it, it was, it was too big. Um, fortunately, the two pieces of equipment that we have, um, P N R's Kubota is timed out. It's old and they were gonna buy a new one, so they were able to purchase one of ours. And the second one that we, we have from last year's purchase, we have broom attachments and we have attachments where we could still utilize it on our, our street programs.
Okay. All right. Well, good. Thank you. I just thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Frazier?
Question. Uh, in the write-up, it said that these pieces of equipment weren't available when the budget was first put together, but they came available. Are they brand new kinds of equipment or are they just hadn't been manufactured yet? So what, what's, what has happened is, um, I was a highway supervisor before superintendent and for five years, um, I was buying all the lawn equipment. And I was at Weingart's two years ago, um, purchasing a mower and I saw the piece of equipment when it first came out. So it's a two-year-old piece of equipment and, and I thought it was kind of interesting. Um, so, uh, me and the salesman talked about it. And, um, what, what they were doing, the company was, was making these and producing them. And as soon as Weingart's had two or three of them on site, that first year they were, they were immediately gone because sidewalks are usually a, a two or three person operation. And with this machine, it's a one, it's a one-person operation. So the first year, um, it was a new piece of equipment. I had my eye on it, but, um, you know, I was unsure on how it would do. And then the second year, you just couldn't get it, um, as fast as they were making them. Contractors that have apartment complexes and, and, um, you know, uh, those type of accounts, they were buying them as soon as they hit the, as soon as they hit the showroom. Okay, now, I, for the snow, is it a blade or a brush? So it's a four-foot blade and it's set up just like a, it's set up like a zero churn lawnmower specifically made for sidewalks. Four-foot blade on the front, um, with a liquid de-icing tank, which we're doing some liquid de-icing at the DPW now. And it also has a tank on the back to throw rock salt. So, uh, either, either way you can use it, but it's specifically made for sidewalks at four foot. What we were, what we encountered with the last piece of equipment is some of the sidewalk, um, some of the lengths of the sidewalk and the, the widths were too tight. So we were tearing up grass. It was our first go around. And then the spring, we had to go back and, and do some dress up. So, um, I guess you could say it was, it was, uh, trial and error. Definitely wrong piece of equipment, but, um, the two that we purchased, one being repurchased from P N R and the other one being utilized with the, the, you know, the attachments. We can use them at our yard and we can use them on, you know, on highway type, uh, job sites. Okay, now, um, it would have been real helpful if we'd had a picture and I didn't, at least I didn't see a picture when I went through the material. But all of our sidewalks aren't exactly flat. So is there like a skid plate on it that if they get to a place that's unlevel that it won't jam the driver when they hit, hit it? Yeah, it, it's a, it's like a floating system, so the blade is curved. So if you catch, you know, you catch a heave or you catch an, an area, it, it does, um, it does ride over it. It, yeah, it's not gonna, it's not gonna stop the machine and launch somebody or anything like that. Well, you know, I've been watching it and checking out the reviews for two years, you know, two, two seasons now, because I thought they were kind of neat and, and, uh, I, I've had my eyes on them. So they, they're getting really good reviews. Okay, and the last question I have is the seven miles of sidewalk that we're responsible for, is that all of our sidewalks? Or is that only seven miles of all the sidewalk that we do have? Um, it, what it is, is it's seven miles of, it's seven miles of city property, um, that has a sidewalk attached to it. For example, like, um, eleven mile road, the service drive where the wall is from, you know, from Evergreen towards Lasher. Um, you know, that sidewalk is ours. Um, I mean, there, there is a, there is a list and, and I suppose I could have got, you know, the list. Uh, Kirby's on Franklin Road, there's a wall there that the highway, um, department that cut the grass, but that sidewalk's ours. Um, twelve mile has, um, a, a few lengths in it. Eleven miles got lengths, um, ten mile from Pierce. Um, Pierce to Fairfax, that's ours. Um, Mount Vernon. Um, Providence to Mount Vernon, there's a couple addresses over there. Um, eight mile from Southfield where the gas station is, um, going west, that's ours. Uh, Civic Center from Lasher to the service drive. You know, there, there is, there is a list, um, and it's seven point three miles total. Okay, so it's, uh, the sidewalks that we control, but it's not in front of people's houses and stuff. Correct. Okay. All right. I think it's a pretty neat machine that you can, uh, plow the sidewalks and saw them at the same time. So, yeah, I'm supporting both. Yeah, it really takes a, a contractor, um, you know, everything that I've read about it. A contractor goes, um, in front of an office building or a school and you've got somebody with a snow blower, you've got somebody shoveling, you know, and then somebody's coming behind and they're salting. It's a, it's a one person, it's a one-person operation and it's with a four-foot blade length, it's, it's a one-pass operation. Okay, I want to say thanks for
Okay, I wanna say thanks for fun, for looking for something that increases your, your, uh, ability to get things done at a so, lower cost, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. That's my job.
All right, um, Council President Taylor had to step away for a minute. Um, did we, did we go through everyone? I, I believe we did. Um, Mr. Hoskins, did you have a chance to speak on this one?
Uh, I'm all set.
Okay. Um, if there's no other questions, we can entertain a motion.
I move that we, uh, purchase the piece, the two pieces of equipment as presented to us for the Public Works.
Support.
All right, it has been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilwoman Banks, uh, to purchase the snow plowing equipment as presented by Public Works. Uh, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor? Banks? House?
Great, thank you. Um, next is the authorization to purchase transit stop improvement and pedestrian amenities. Uh, I believe this is Mr. Crowde.
Yep, thank you. Um, Wendell, can you go back to that, uh, last planning slide, please? There you go. Thank you. Yeah, Council may remember on April twenty-sixth, um, at your regular council meeting, the Honorable Body authorized the allocation of a hundred thousand dollars from the use of Designated Fund Balance or Metrofund Act for the installation of sidewalk gaps, keywoks, bench pads, benches, and trash receptacle from the current fiscal year. Uh, as previously presented to council, we had done a comprehensive trans, transit improvement study. Uh, we have identified, um, up to fifteen priorities. We believe that we could, um, with a hundred thousand dollar allocation, we can, um, do fifteen concrete pads, uh, meet our unified bench and trash receptacle design, provide ADA accessible pads and keywoks, and to provide up to fifteen benches and, and thirteen trash receptacles. Before you, uh, we are asking for authorization of resolution that, uh, would authorize JB contractors for their concrete work and installation of fixtures and landscape forms for the procurement of benches and trash receptacles. Expenditures for this project will not exceed a hundred thousand, of which fifty-seven thousand for concrete work and forty-two thousand for the fabrication, delivery of furnishings, and contingencies. Uh, and, um, we are making this recommendation to purchase the benches and trash receptacles without competitive bidding in accordance with Chapter Eight City Code by contracting with or through another unit of government, namely the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. So we have, uh, examples of the brand of style that we would like to do citywide outside of the designated districts such as the city center or, um, DDA or Centropolis, because they have their own brand. But this would provide a unified placemaking, um, streetscape throughout the city as indicated in this map. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Banks? Councilwoman Banks, do you have any questions?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, I thought I was unmuted. On the attachment, this is to Councilman, um, excuse me, to Planner Crowde, please. On the map that, um, is provided, there are some red stars and green stars, and I could not identify what that, what they meant. I don't see a identification for red or green.
Um, I believe, um, Planner Bryce is on with us. If he could elaborate, otherwise, um, I believe there's fifteen green stars, which represents the first priorities, but if Planner Bryce can, uh, help clarify between green and red?
Yeah, I, I am here, actually. So these are the transit stops from the original, uh, study that we did, where we looked at every bus stop in the city. So the red stars are ones that scored high, and the green stars are the ones that scored, uh, medium. So we're trying to get a, a mix of both in our, uh, action for tonight.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, both the red and the green stars as presented on this chart will have both, um, the, um, chairs or the, the, um, trash and bench, trash receptacle and also the benches?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, Councilman Banks, the order priority is to get all of the identified stops that have concrete pads. Then the next order priority is to provide a bench, and then the third priority is a trash receptacle. We do have, uh, some trash receptacles in our inventory. So, um, that's why there's a slight difference in, um, the numbers. But our, our goal, again, is to maximize the amount of money that's been allocated, and it, and I've kinda joked, it's like an algebra formula. How much concrete can we pour? Um, and then allows us to purchase benches and trash receptacles and still have enough money to have our contractor install them. So we, we believe we're right around fifteen for this first round.
Well, I'm happy to see the spaces that you've identified, and also I like the look and the style. Last question, how often will the trash receptacles be emptied?
Well, um, we, in some, in some cases, if it's, uh, part of a transit stop, um, SMART goes through on, on a weekly basis, um, and tries to keep them clean. In some cases, we have partnerships with adjacent property owners. And if we are aware of a, a trash receptacle that's full, we have been working with our codes department and sometimes DPW to, uh, to, to change them out. So, um, again, we don't ever wanna see them overflowing, and, and many times, it does not require more than once every week or two, but in the high, high-traffic areas, it might require, um, cleanup more often.
Thank you.
And the other thing I can say to you is that, that the trash receptacles that are provided by the Transit Authority are about a third the size, and that's why they fill up much quicker. So that's why we've gone to the larger, um, trash receptacle.
Well, thank you. I like the look, and I'm excited to see these installed around the city. Long overdue.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Brightwell?
Um, yes, I, I like this idea. I think it's a very good use of the, uh, funds in the Metro Act. And I think this is a good from a continuity standpoint of the city's image, and in, and it, uh, adds to our curb appeal. I know we're doing different things in different development uh, ser, areas of the city, but this is a good idea, and I have support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
For facing traffic. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Frazier, um, I only heard the last word, part of a word.
Oh, I say, are these going to be installed with the backs to traffic or facing traffic?
Well, uh, I could, I could tell you that, um, the majority of them will be facing the direction of the, the, the bus, the, the bus transit, as it's, as it's heading, uh, either east, west, north, or south. But, uh, they're, they're, um, they have to be installed in the right way. So, um, there may be some occasion on circumstance, topography, or others where they would face another direction, but, but not at transit stops. And I believe the majority of these are going in, uh, on transit locations.
You and I have had this conversation before about the
Yes, we have.
The bench. The bench.
And I would say they're gonna be perpendicular to the street, but facing oncoming bus traffic.
Oh, okay. That's a compromise. That's it. I have no other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no question.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely in favor of this.
So, Madam Clerk?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
All right. Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, sorry, I would like to move the authorization for, uh, to purchase transit stop improvement and pedestrian amen, amenities as presented.
And we do have, uh, a recommend, recommended resolution as part of my letter, so.
All right.
Is there a second? Let's finish, let's finish this person, then we can check it here.
Councilwoman Banks, support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us to approve the authorization to purchase transit stop improvements and pedestrian amen, amenities. Now, um, it, should we take the vote, or can we have, um, Terry read the, um, the resolution or the, that he has?
I see the, uh, recommended resolution in the, in the, in the write-up. Do you want me to just read it?
If you, if you wouldn't mind either read it or refer to it, I think that would be more appropriate.
Uh, do I have to amend my motion then?
Yes.
All right, so I, I'd like to amend my original motion, and I'd like to make a new motion, or I'd like to amend my motion to approve purchase transit stop improvement and pedestrian amenities at, also in conjunction with the recommended resolution by the city planner.
And we would need Ms. Banks to
Yeah, Ms. Banks, thank you. Thank you. Now, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approved authorization to purchase the transit stop improvements and pedestrian, along with the recommended, um,
Resolution.
Resolution, uh, presented by the, uh, planner. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank, thank you very much and good evening.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the approval of landscape improvements at the Southfield Public Library.
Good evening and thank you, Madam President and esteemed council. This is Mary Beal from the library. In May twenty-twenty-one, the Southfield Library Board of Trustees endorsed and approved funding to refurbish and reimagine our outdoor spaces in order to facilitate programming for education and recreation for our library patrons. In the past, these spaces, the Evergreen Plaza and the Children's Reading Garden, were used solely as passive seating areas. With this project, these areas will become active components of library services by including interactive programming for all. Use of our outdoor spaces allows the library to welcome back our patrons safely and to plan a full summer of in-person and interactive programs for adults, youth, and families, including our summer reading program. In consultation with city administration, Parks and Recreation, and OHM, we determined steps to take in order to repair and enhance both landscaping and hardscaping of these areas for the greatest safety and usability. Presently, our Children's Reading Garden is unusable due to tree roots upending the pavers and seating in this area. The improvements in this item will start the process to make this area usable again. The projects outlined in this item will start the process to convert these areas into mixed-use spaces. There is urgency to begin so that we might make better use of these outdoor spaces during the summer months and into the fall, especially as we are committed to the safety of our citizens. The items listed in this phase will provide immediate benefits, allowing the library to offer new programs, including pollinator gardening, vegetable gardening, and provide a beautiful backdrop for our avid walkers, our art lovers, and for city programs throughout the summer. Just last week, we hosted our first in-person event at the library in fifteen months, our popular jazz and blues concert. We discovered that not only could we successfully provide library services in an outdoor setting, but that we could greatly increase attendance and participation. Even pre-COVID, this event was restricted by indoor capacity limits to one hundred people, but last week, over three hundred people enjoyed this program. This project welcomes our patrons back and makes it possible for more people to enjoy and benefit from library programs. And I am open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you again. Very nice presentation. Uh, council, uh, we'll start with you, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Uh, no, no questions. I think this is, um, this is a, a well-needed project, and I, I think it would also help bring more people to the, uh, to the library, especially for outdoor programming, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, uh, Brightwell?
Uh, no questions. Excellent presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier? We can't hear you.
Agreed. Can't hear me?
We, we can now. What did you say?
I said, I have no questions, but anything we can do to get kids into the library to have them read, I'm for.
All right. And Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I will entertain a motion.
Councilwoman Banks? Um, I recommend that city council hereby appro, um, approves United Landscape of Livonia for, um, landscaping improvements at the Southfield Public Library, and that council authorizes OHM to provide engineering, consulting, and inspection services.
Councilman Mandelbaum supports.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to authorize the approval of the landscape improvements at the Southfield Public Library. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is the authorization to bid Section eleven water main lining project for DPW. Yes.
Yes, uh, good evening, Honorable Body. This is AJ Jensen, Superintendent for DPW. DPW is seeking authorization for a water main lining project to go out to bid. Um, it's roughly two hundred, or two, five thousand two hundred feet of eight-inch cast iron pipe that is now degraded. Uh, we're, we're looking for, uh, roughly two million dollars, uh, for this. We, we anticipate that it'd be roughly two million dollars for this bid to come in. The, uh, we're, we're trying to do this project in this manner because, uh, we have very good roads in that area that were done in, uh, twenty sixteen, and we're trying to preserve that, um, so that, uh, we don't ruin the roads we just put in five years ago. Uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, council, we'll start with you, Councilman Frazier.
Can you hear me?
Nope.
Then how did you say no?
I can hear you now.
Uh, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this. Thank you.
Uh huh. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, I will entertain a motion.
Councilwoman Banks, um, uh, move that council does hereby authorize the purchasing department seat bids for Section eleven water main lining capital project.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the authorization to bid, uh, the Section eleven water main lining project for D P W. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fraser?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay, our next is, item is the facility maintenance budget increase. John, are you handling that?
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn. I'll jump in, and I, John was with us, I thought. Uh, we're requesting authori- uh, authorization, uh, to transfer from the Building Infrastructure Reserve Account within the general fund committed fund balance, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to, uh, cover emergency purchases, uh, which, uh, total two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, um, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. We're covering a hundred and seventy thousand dollar shortfall. Has Mr. McReena joined us? Yes, sir. Um, we've indicated on, uh, this, uh, report, uh, a number of items that are particular, associated, um, with, uh, COVID, and that was the ultraviolet installation in the, uh, pavilion, the library, the arts and activities, uh, building, uh, Park Services Building, Ever, Evergreen Hills Golf Course. But, uh, we, we're offsetting a shortfall in that a- account by transferring a hundred and seventy thousand from general fund committed balance.
Okay. Um, counsel, I'll open to you for questions, and I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
No questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I have a question. Um, with respect to the U V for the library, uh, why are we paying for the library? Uh, don't they have their own, their own funds for, for these repairs? You know, update?
Because our facility services group provides, uh, facility services to their, uh, building. There will eventually be an accounting adjustment. In addition, the all U V expenditures will be charged, uh, to COVID as we go through the accounting of that, uh, in, in the end. But you are correct, uh, Mr. Councilman Brightwell. Um, the library does, but our facility services group does, uh, these facility repairs, uh, for them.
Okay, uh, fine, thank you, Mr. Zorn. They, but they will purchase some kind of way to that nine thousand. Eighteen, back to it. Okay, good enough. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, I apologize. I was having technical difficulties, but Mr. Zorn did answer the questions totally correctly and accurately.
And Councilman Fraser?
Uh, yeah, uh, once COVID is behind us, the stuff that was purchased for that, what will happen to it? Will it just go into storage, or was there an adaptive reuse for it, for something else, or, or what?
Council President, if I could respond to that?
Yes, please.
Actually, the COVID-related installations on this agenda item are act, are useful for all sorts of things. For instance, they prevent the spread of tuberculosis, so these U V installations will help keep our buildings safe for COVID or no COVID. Intend to keep them in operation.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Um, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell, I'm mo- I move that we approve Item G, Facility Maintenance Budget Increase.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Fraser, for the approval of the Facility Maintenance Budget Increase. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fraser?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is for discussion only. It's the proposed ordinance, the business registration, and our legal department, um, our city attorney, I believe, is going to present this.
Yes, good evening, ma- good evening, Madam President. Counsel members, uh, what I have attached in your packet was, is a business ordinance, a business registration ordinance, excuse me. Um, I've worked with, uh, code enforcement and Deputy Administrator McReena, and what this will do is help the city to keep track of the businesses when there's some type of emergency at a location. As you know, we already have a business license ordinance. Not many businesses, um, are required to have a city license, and therefore, with this business registration ordinance, um, it's going to help us to keep track of the many businesses, uh, that may or may not have to have a license. We did have a discussion at the Legislative Committee meeting about those that are required, uh, to be licensed, and I believe we made some changes such that it would be waived for those businesses, although there's not many. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, um, Code Enforcement Director Beeks, and see if she wants to add anything, and then let counsel ask any questions.
Oh my God.
Is Ms. Beeks on the line?
I will unmute individuals in the, uh, attendee list to see if she's, uh, under the attendees. I have just done that.
Okay, well, we don't hear anything from her. Dawn, did you want to say anything else, or you wanted to go right to counsel for questions?
Well, we can go to counsel, uh, for questions. I hope Mr. McReena's on the line, because there may be some things that I may not have full information, but let's hear the questions.
Okay. Uh, I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
Um, so Dawn, tell me, what, what businesses, uh, I gotta, I, I, I guess I got, I got a mixed hearing of. You tell me that some businesses are registered, but other businesses are not registered. What, what was the, uh, the dividing point there?
So, under our ordinance, Councilman Brightwell, there, there's some businesses that require, um, they have to have a license. But for the registration, we want every business, whether under our ordinance, you have to be licensed or not, because the business registration is going to be, is different, um, and that is really a tracking, uh, measure in regards to the businesses that are in the city, gives us more contact information, um. So, every business, I believe the goal is every business is to be registered. Not every business organization has to have a license to, um, I'm trying to think of off the top of my head, um. Uh, I, I can't think of anything but massage parlors, um. No, not even, I don't like what I wanted to really say, but a myomassology. To have that business, you do need a li- uh, city license. Uh, but right now, um, we no longer have an ordinance for lawn maintenance. But we would want for those businesses to register under this ordinance, and for myomassology that requires a business license, we may waive that registration fee. That is the understanding, uh, that I received from Legislative Committee when we met a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, um, I'm just surprised that, um, I thought clearly we knew the name and or address of every business in the city of Southfield, but that, that is something that we, I'm, I'm a hundred percent supportive of this, because it's, it, it is, uh, a little more, uh, better control for us in, um, for what's going on in the city, so I'm supportive of this. What, what is the, and you don't have to, I know, I know this is still in development stages. What is the proposed fee for registration?
So, I don't know if Mr. McReena's on there. I'm going to go by memory. I thought, I'm going to let counsel, um.
Hi, this is, uh, Therese Beeks, if I may. I'm sorry, I missed this item on the agenda. Um, the proposed fee is flat fifty dollars for, um, all businesses to register for the, for an, a calendar year. Um, if the business has a current license with the city clerk's office, the, the registration fee is waived.
Okay, and what is the license? Is there a license fee? Or is it very?
Well, there are a few businesses in the city that are required to license, such as massage parlors, uh, liquor licenses, um, daycare and home, home childcare, I believe, are required to be licensed with the city clerk's office. In, in that case, the business registration fee will be waived.
Okay, okay, Dawn. I'm, I'm a supporter of this, um, it's, it's something that should have, should have been, been done. But, supportive, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fraser?
Yes, um. We talked about this, uh, a number of years ago, and nothing ever happened on it, but, um, would you give the business, uh, like a certificate that they have to display in their business to show that they're registered, or, uh, in some cities, they have like decals that they put on their front window or on the door to let people know that they're registered?
Good evening, Councilman Fraser. Yes, a certificate of registration will be issued to businesses registered with the city. Um, the difference between registration and license will be, uh, visible, um, by color.
Okay, so they, they'll display it in their business so that, uh, let's say one of your people walk in, they can see that they're current with, with their, uh, registration fees?
Yes, sir. They can display it in their business.
Thank you. That's it.
Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you, uh, and they're, it kind of refreshed my memory. I know we talked about, uh, like brick and mortar businesses versus more businesses that are more, uh, transit, transient. Um, uh, we're, we're going to start with the brick and mortar businesses with this first, right?
Good evening, Councilman Hos- Hoskins. Yes, we're going to start with traditional brick and mortar businesses with a storefront, and, um, later on down the line, uh, focus, um, consider home businesses.
Okay, I mean, of course, I had the pleasure of working on this in the Legislative Committee, and I'm, I'm definitely glad we're doing, uh, glad we're doing this, and we're, um, hopefully moving forward with this. Alright, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I think this is a, a great idea, and I definitely think that we should, um, move it forward. I also happen to like Councilman Fraser's, um, idea about having, you know, some type of sign or some, some type of recognition for those businesses that are registered, um, so people know. But I do, I, I think that this is something important for the city, so thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, how are we going to, um, identify the businesses again, and who will be doing this?
Good evening, Councilwoman Banks. We have several, uh, uh, outlets to, uh, research the businesses. Um, we have, uh, the planning department, uh, provided, uh, some information on strip malls and their occupants. We have, uh, CoStar. Um, I'm going to get with, uh, business development on how to utilize CoStar, which I believe is what they're using to, um, identify businesses. And, uh, there are some, um, there's a list of businesses available on the internet as well.
Okay, so we're not going to basically be taking section by section and going up and down and knocking on doors or giving them applications? We're just going to be mailing them out, or emailing them, or?
We're going to start with mailing out, uh, notices to the businesses and property owners that we've identified, and, um, we're aware that there are some office classes that, uh, house many businesses, so we will do door-to-door, uh, identification as necessary, especially in areas where there are more than one business inside of, um, a high-rise or, um, multi-unit.
Okay, and code enforcement officers will be doing this?
Yes, code enforcement officers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, most of the questions that I have have been asked, like, uh, the home businesses. You said you're going to start with the brick and mortar building, businesses first. You're going to go with the ones that you've already identified. But how are you going to, and, and I, you just answered how you're going to go do a mailing and, uh, knock on some of the doors of the multi- or, or high-rise buildings? But, um, how are you going to, I guess that's for existing. What about new businesses that's coming in? Are you going to catch those right at the time at the clerk's office when they first start, come in and register? Uh, for their licenses, is it also going to be a part of that system?
I'm sorry, we had some feedback there. Um, the new businesses coming in, uh, will be identified, uh, when we do another round of inspections. Um, this is an annual event, and, um, we're going to, uh, do inspections as needed.
Okay. Um, and what's like the rollout time? I know that if everything gets passed, and I know we're just discussing it tonight, but what timeframe are you looking at starting this? Like, the beginning of next year, or? What, what timelines are you looking at?
We were hoping to begin this year and, um, do the, um, the mailouts in batches. Um, uh, preferably in, um, alphabetical order by name of business, um. Yes, so it wa- it will be, um, as we go, if that makes sense. As we go, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, it's something that's needed, I'm just trying to follow how it would. How, how it would happen. Uh, cause I, I know like in some high-rise, there's many, many small businesses within, um, that building. And if you come certain days, people won't be there, so you're gonna have to have, um. Manpower to return, or you're gonna leave a notice, or you're gonna leave a note. I don't, I don't know, um, and then we gotta have a follow-up process, and I know this is just in the beginning, the discussion. Phases, but, um, like Mr. Frazier had mentioned before, we had a conversation about this. A few years back, and I don't remember where it ended up, but.
Madam President?
Yes.
Rochelle Freeman?
Hi.
Hi, if, if I could just share, I, I had told, um. Uh, Ms., uh, Ty- Tyree said I would assist her with this effort. Um, the, between my department, um, this, the City Center Advisory Board and Terry and the DDA. We know many of the property owners and the management companies of the. Of the, the high-rise buildings, and we can work with them to assist regarding, um. Getting the applications out to the business community that are in the high-rises. It's traditionally very challenging, and especially right now with COVID, like you mentioned. Many people are not in their spaces, um, at this time, so. There's really no one to talk to at a lot of the office buildings at this time. But, um, to work with the property managers to get the applications out and we'll be there to assist as, as we can.
Oh, that's great to know. Are, are we also partnering like with Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, where they know a lot of businesses as well?
Absolutely, I mean, uh, we'll, we'll work with, uh, code enforcement and, you know, I'm on the chamber board. And we'll help get the word out through that, those channels. And, um, you know, and again, I would suggest if someone's getting their building permit or their CFO for a new tenant. That might be the, the most efficient way to get this application out to, to people.
Yes.
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn. When we first brought this to council, uh. And then to the Legislative Committee, I just wanna remind you, our objective, one of the objectives, and it became very clear during this COVID crisis. We really didn't have an effective database to work from, uh, with our, our businesses. We did have in our multifamily apartments and that, we have the registration, that was one database. But a way to, to reach out, uh, have a single point of contact with very various businesses. We recognize it'll never be a hundred percent, but we need to have something with broader depth. Those businesses that were licensed in the city were providing certain services. Many of the businesses were headquartered outside of, uh, Southfield. Uh, but those that are in Southfield, uh, who have those licenses will be waiving the registration. And there'll be a full media and rollout campaign. I'm really thinking this starts the last quarter of this year. Uh, this is June, by the time we take, uh, this, uh, ordinance through two readings and get it published. Will be at the latter, you know, will be in mid-August, possibly the latter part of August. That'll only allow staff a month, uh, to roll out. I also really like code handling this. I wanna put more of a face and stronger visibility on our code officers. And if they have a chance to interact with our business community, it's not just about the opportunity to. You know, be the heavy when our businesses ha- have, you know, perhaps they're doing something wrong. But it's about building that relationship, an, an opportunity to enhance the communication and. I think every business owner should know who their code officer is. That way, perhaps, uh, when there is an issue, it'll be less confrontational and it'll be, how can I help you to get. To something that's within our community values and, um, makes sense. So, it's the registration for communicating. I've also said to Parks and Rec, this becomes a great platform. To launch our PR efforts, you know, when there's a class hap- happening, a new Zumba class. A volleyball class, basketball clinic happening, just one more way to get. More people in- involved into the cultural activities that are happening in this, uh, i- i- in Southfield and. What, what is sta- with, with my team has talked about is we've got a whole lot of people working here. If we could get, to get them to also recreate here, it'll, you know, they're more likely gonna wanna live here a- a- as well and. Uh, just to continue to drive that value. I'm real pleased that, uh, Therese and her team, you know, has, has, and working with business development, building and planning. Um, that I, I think we can build a solid platform to launch this, uh, registration process. Of which it'll all be available online. The investment council made in BSNA. We're really starting to see the dividends pay off, and this is just one more where our software will be unified and tied together. You know, so I, you know, our start dates that October one, uh, we'll spend some time. Uh, and put together, uh, a rollout campaign that'll involve, uh, community relations and cable. Uh, probably for print advertisement, our chamber a- and other partners.
I, I, and I agree with all that you said, and I think this is a great idea, and I, I'm really behind this. I was just trying to think of ways to, uh, help businesses to want to register, and I was thinking of ways that we could. Uh, partner together with all the different pieces, such as, uh. Community development and Parks and Rec and all those other ones. But, it would also be a way to incentivize the companies to encourage them to wanna register. If they could say, oh, hey, yeah, this is gonna be on the internet or show them the benefits of it. That would help them to want to register, and that would make our jobs a little bit easier. It's gonna be a tough job no matter what. But it could become a little bit easier if we could show them some benefit for them, that's all.
We can do that.
Uh, any other con- conversations or remarks? Mayor, did you have anything?
If, if the mayor has anything to say, I'll, I'd like to make some comments after the mayor.
Okay. We're hearing none, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Frazier?
Okay, now, is this gonna be voluntary or mandatory?
Mister, uh, if I may, Mr. uh, Frazier, uh, it, it would be an ordinance, so it is a, a re- a requirement. Of doing business in Southfield.
Okay, now, um, I know we talked a little bit, but what is the benefit to a person? That you can talk to, look them in the eye and say, here's the benefit of registering, registering. For the city of South, doing business in the city of Southfield.
The, the primary benefit, it's about public safety, a way to communicate with the general, uh, public in the event of, of. Some type of emergency, we have another way of communicating. We recently had a fire at Nine Mile in Providence, and we didn't know any of those businesses were in that building. We, it was not even a registered vacant building. And the more information we have, when these things happen, we have a better chance of being able to communicate.
Okay, another question I have is, uh, how labor-intensive is this gonna be? For the first round? After that, it's gonna be in, uh, software, so it won't be quite so bad, but. The first, the first round is gonna be like the census, like in the census.
And, and I think that's for these partnerships. Where the partnerships that, uh, Ms. uh, Council, Councilwoman, uh, Taylor and, uh, Ms. Freeman and Ms. Beeks have, have mentioned. Will be absolutely critical.
Okay, I'm, I'm not against it or anything else, but I think we gotta think our way all the way through it, so. We don't run into a, uh, you know, get blindsided with, oh, I didn't even think of that, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, did you have anything you wanna add to this conversation?
Uh, Madam President, just want to know, tell you, we have been working on this for, um, a number of months, so I do. Uh, commend, um, Deputy Administrator McReena and Director Beeks. Um, tonight's, uh, was an opportunity to get more feedback from council. So that we can, uh, continue to orchestrate and speak to legal about the actual wording, um, in the ordinance. So, this is the beginning of the discussion, and I know, uh, council's input has been talking about the process and how we get to the end result. Uh, so this was an opportunity to welcome the council's commentary, so we can further, uh, do any additional research that be, may be necessary. And then come to council with, uh, uh, additional documentation so that we can get this, uh, process started. Uh, we have had endless hours with BSNA, think this is a great utilization once this program get up. With technology and it will put us, um, in par with our other colleagues, with cities of our sizes that we do have mechanisms to communicate. Not only with our, um, business owners, but also give the business owners a opportunity for, um. For exposure, so, um, these are all things we have to consider when we looking at how we wanna market our city, five to ten years down the line. And how we want to compete with other cities, uh, with the same type of demographics and size and population. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other comments for discussion since, on this item? Okay, hearing none, thank you so much. We'll look forward to hearing from you again. Okay, um, next we have communications. And first of all, I just wanna say thank you to everyone for being so patient with us and with our, um. Technical difficulties that we had earlier, I just wanna say thank you so much for staying with us. Um, and I'd like to read that the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No, no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city. Council member or elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member. Or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed. Such person may be deemed to be, by the presiding officer, to have committed a breach of the peace. By disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city of, uh, Southfield. And of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting or have their microphone muted. Thank you, and with that, I'd like to open up for communications. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the line?
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five. Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Madam President, I wish tonight to talk about Chapter Seven. Chapter Seven in the Southfield City Charter. Chapter Seven is entitled Judicial Division, which describes. How the Municipal Court of the City of Southfield works. Sad to say, the municipal, the Municipal Court of the City of Southfield was abolished over fifty years ago. Yes, abolished by Public Act One Fifty-Four of nineteen sixty-eight. As mandated by the nineteen sixty-three Michigan Constitution. And thus, the abolished Southfield Municipal Court was replaced with the Forty-Sixth District Court. On January the first nineteen sixty-nine. Exactly five years after the effective date of the nineteen sixty-three Constitution. As prescribed by Article Six, Section Twenty-Six of the Constitution. Check it out, check it out, Madam Chair, check it out. Today and for the last fifty-two years, this city, your city, Madam Chair. Has been under the judicial rule of a district court, but not according to your outdated city charter, Madam Chair. In the Southfield City Charter, Chapter Seven is incompatible with both Michigan statute. Law and Michigan constitutional law, thus invalidating Chapter Seven totally. Your city charter, Madam Chair, has been and has become an historical document. Because it has not been regularly updated like other city charters, for example, like the city of Detroit. After fifty-two years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council. Delete Chapter Seven, along with the many other outdated items, by creating a charter commission. Under the authority of Section Eighteen of the Home Rule Act of nineteen oh nine. If not now, then when? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, this is Pamela Gerald, and I just wanna thank the residents for all of the calls. All of their concerns and care for me during a very difficult time, but more importantly, for their trust in me for almost forty years. In the city of Southfield. So, earlier you heard me talking about the fact that. You know, we have people that are in these elected positions and they run for office. That's absolutely fine, but what we don't want you to do is take one project. Because our residents are bigger than one project, we love the city. And we have a track record in this city. That's what we want candidates to do and to be. We want you to be concerned about the city, we want you to have a track record, we want you to say what you've done. While you were in office. We wanna know what your platform is, what you're going to do. And how you're going to move the city of Southfield forward in the future. I'm not going to tolerate, as an almost forty-year advocate in the city of Southfield. Negative campaigning, negative flyers, and the race card. Tell us what you're going to do, tell us how you value the resident who are at the top of the organizational chart. And leave all that other stuff alone. We have got to take this city forward. We have other vacant properties in this city. And we have got to find developers that are willing to come in and make lemonade. Out of lemons, and these are properties back thirty years, almost forty years, they were stellar properties. People are moving to Southfield because they like our city services. People are moving to Southfield because they like our public safety. People are moving to Southfield because they like the relationship with public safety, with the city administration. And the fact that they have a voice, and their voice can be utilized because people are listening. Let's not take one project because you disagree with it. And turn it into something political because it is not. It is a vacant property that was vacant for six years, let's turn it into something. Raise your property value. But be a smart, intelligent voter, and that's what you can do for your fellow resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, um, this is Karen Ledford at one eight seven five six Capital, Southfield, Michigan. I have a couple of comments. I had called earlier because on your agenda that's printed on, um, under the city clerk's office. With a printed agenda, you had the wrong access code number, but, um, I'm appreciative of someone who answered the phone. It gave me the correct one, but I know that a lot of people weren't able to. the correct one. But I know that a lot of people weren't able to get in because you have the at wrong access code uh, on the agenda. At the end of the meeting now, you put the right one in last line under communications. My other comment is that I'm very frustrated that you're still having meetings um, technical, virtually. I know that um, tomorrow, the governor has opened up the state, and I expect uh, very soon that we will be meeting in person again, the council. When I called, um, somebody indicated that you decided maybe after Labor Day. That's not acceptable. This virtual council meetings that the public is looking at, the technology or uh, is poor. Uh, some of you sound like you're talking in a tin cup, Mr. Brightwell and others. You were late getting on today because of technical difficulty. So I expect maybe I need to call the news. That's what I think I was going to do. I think I'll call all the news outlet, the media, to let them know that the city of Southfield is um, you're not serving the public. Your meetings are not open. Just because it's on TV and just because it's on computers and just because you can call in and listen does not mean that everyone has access. Access is when you're meeting in person. The auditorium is, is huge. People can do social distancing two times over, and so can the council. You can set your council uh, tables have two desks for that. Also want to make a comment about um, earlier for the library landscaping, if I'm not wrong, somebody mentioned a company that was from Livonia. It would be nice if you could find the landscaping uh, company from Southfield, within Southfield, to do the landscaping. Let's support our own businesses instead of trying to charge them $50 a year to be registered, which is something that I have questions about. I'm not for sure that I agree with that. I need to know what is going to be done with the information that you collect. Will people begin, businesses begin to get solicitations? Will this be used for public use or what? What exactly? If I give up my business information, I do not expect to have calls or anything from strangers. So um, and also I'm, I'm, I want y'all to know that I'm kind of disappointed in this whole uh, McKinley out uh, deal, because there's still a lot of unanswered questions. You've had open houses, but we have not had a sit-down meeting because there are still some questions. And I respect everyone's opinion, but it doesn't seem like the council pays any attention to the local individuals or the local citizens in which something may be done. I still remember what happened to at Hope Missionary Church up there on Nine Mile, when um, you agreed to let the church expand its parking lot. Resident after resident came up there against it and yet still, you didn't vote in favor of the residents or the citizens. And it's being done again within our neighborhood. You have to ask yourself sincerely, where will a $400,000 home sell in this neighborhood? Or what other part of Southfield will a $400,000 home sell? And be honest with yourself. And I have-
Thank you, Ms. Ledford. Your, your time is up. Your three minutes is up. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, honorable body. This is Rosemary Allen, Southfield resident. I wasn't able to get on during the communications portion regarding the presentation of the McKinley project, having some type of technical difficulties. However, I wanted to thank the council for the unanimous vote on this project. It's a lovely project, and I believe it will revitalize the area and bring new life to it in a positive way. The building has been vacant for some time and starting to resemble an eyesore, even though it has historic bones to it. I am in favor of this project, and I hope truly that the residents will come to appreciate it once they fully see the transformation of the area and the beauty that it will bring. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, that concludes the public comment for this evening.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Uh, council will turn to you for uh, this under the council portion. And uh, we'll start with you, um, Nancy, uh, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Um, I, with the Fourth of July holiday approaching, I just want to remind um, our residents that we do have a fireworks ordinance. I received several communications asking um, if we did. And the ordinance states that fireworks um, can be um, we can have fireworks from 11 a.m. to 11:45 p.m. on June 29th and June 30th, also July 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. So if you're experiencing people shooting fireworks off any earlier than June 29th or any later than July 4th, um, you can contact the, the police department or the fire department um, and express your complaints to them. The violation of this section shall constitute a municipal civil infraction, and there is a fine of up to $1,000. So for those who are listening, um, again, please remember that we do have a fireworks ordinance. I also caution everyone to please be careful while you, you know, igniting the fireworks, and please have a safe Fourth of July holiday weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Um, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes. Um, several years ago, before the pandemic, I made an announcement for my veterans that the VA was looking for veterans who were in combat zones, Iraq, Afghanistan, who were exposed to burn pits. Burn pits are what, what they are used in uh, combat areas to burn um, plastic, human waste, and other things that are not needed. They're, that's their way to do things in uh, the combat zone. And I mentioned that at the time, the VA was looking for veterans to register if you were near a burn pit. And I'm getting notes now, I'm getting messages that uh, quite a few veterans are coming down with mysterious illnesses that, that the VA is trying to diagnose. So if you are, as I've always mentioned, it, my messages are for veterans, but if you know someone and that know a veteran or aware of a veteran, please pass the message on that if the individual was in Iraq, Afghanistan, to register with their Veterans Primary Care uh, provider, that they were near a burn pit. And if you know a veteran, they would know whether or not they were exposed to a burnt uh, burn pit. That's my message for veterans, but another message is this for, it's um, it's for one of our favorite projects that the city puts on, and a lot of other persons, other mayor might mention this, but the photo prize, Southfield puts on a photo prize every year. And I really appreciate this project. I really like it from a community um, participation standpoint. And we get some very lovely and exciting pictures um, from this particular photo prize. So I know Mr. Mannion and uh, he, our community relations director, he sponsored this, you know, lead this project. But I want to just put my name behind that, that I would like for citizens to please participate in this, in the photo prize and make your submissions online and at the city uh, website. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Uh, the only thing that I have is uh, I was really impressed with the amount of people that were involved in the Juneteenth separation, uh, celebration this past weekend. Uh, was nice. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. Um, I'm kind of picking up where, where Councilman Frazier uh, left off. Uh, it was great that the city of Southfield has so many great Juneteenth, Juneteenth events. Um, last week, and I was able to part, participate in the uh, Mayor's Walk um, on Saturday. Um, we had a good crowd. Um, and you know, towards the end of it, it started raining just a little bit, but you know, we toughed it out. Um, and I also want to say, as, as, as Councilwoman Banks said, I want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Uh, make sure you stay safe with uh, fireworks. I know we tend to get a little excited when um, when it's time to use fireworks on uh, the various holidays throughout the year, but I just want you to, you know, be considerate of your neighbors, uh, particularly your neighbors' pets, as many, uh, many dogs don't like um, the sound of fireworks. And also, uh, many of our veterans also um, do not uh, like the sound uh, of the uh, fire, fireworks. Uh, so I just want to make sure we're all being considerate of people, um, while we're also trying to celebrate um, our Independence Day, or one of our Independence Days. Um, but with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. I was going to make the same comment that uh, Councilman Brightwell said um, about the photo prize. Um, I, I went through the photos. Um, I've already voted, um, but there's some, there's some really tough choices to make, so I encourage everyone to look at those photos uh, and make a choice. Other than that, um, um, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, as many have already heard, we wish you all uh, a happy Fourth of July. But I wanted to um, continue with what um, Councilwoman Banks said about the fireworks ordinance, and I wanted to refer or defer to our legislative. Could we review that uh, ordinance now that we have Juneteenth? I know that fireworks is probably going to be a part of that celebration as well. Could we amend that uh, fireworks ordinance to include Juneteenth, that uh, days around Juneteenth, like we do the Fourth, the Fourth of July, since they both are, are, are Independence Days?
Uh, Ma- Ma- Madam President, this is uh, Councilman Hoskins. Uh, I will say that um, in the legislature, uh, there is legislation to, one, make Juneteenth a state holiday, um, but also it will change the law to add it at Juneteenth as one of the state holidays where you can um, allow fireworks. Uh, and that's moving through the process now.
Okay. But would we have to also amend our ordinance so that it would include it since we have a separate ordinance?
Madam President, this is um, Dawn. So our ordinance mirrors the state statute. If I'm not correct, I will look at it. So obviously, we can preempt whatever the state would have. So once I see the changes there, then I would review our ordinance so it would uh, line up with the state statute.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just don't want us to lose sight of that because I know that uh, the fireworks will probably come along with that holiday. Uh, and like I said, with that, uh, stay safe, even though I know that they're relax, we're relaxing a lot of the uh, warnings and things like that, but uh, still be safe, take care of ourselves, and be cautious, and uh, enjoy the holidays that's coming up. Enjoy the warm weather. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again. I wanted to um, pick up on the comments about Juneteenth week. We had a great week. It was well-attended, and it was a very diverse week as far as our offerings. It was educational, cultural, um, physical in the sense of we were out doing things, including the Mayor's Walk. Um, thanks go, this was a team effort coordinated by my office. So I want to thank the Phi Tau Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha, in particular, uh, the, the Chair for Juneteenth, uh, for the sorority, and that was Xena Kyle, uh, the Southfield Historical Society, uh, for their uh, putting together the, the local connection and the, the Freedom Finders, uh, freed um, slaves who came uh, to Southfield Township, uh, as recorded in the 1860 census. Um, and particularly the work of Darla Van Hoy, who uh, is the president of the Historical Society. Uh, I'd like to thank Parks and Rec for the various activities that uh, they put on during the uh, the week. Um, thanks go to Terry Fields, Director, and Kathy Friesha, um, and other people on the Parks and Rec staff, uh, for the concert and the Juneteenth meeting, and um, to the library, um, Kelly Rimbeer on library staff, um, put together uh, several activities, and to the friends of the South Public Library, um, Yolanda Haynes. Um, as was mentioned earlier under Acting Director's um, comments, the um, Jazz and Blues at the library was absolutely fantastic on uh, Wednesday night. Um, Council President Taylor and I attended. Uh, the turnout uh, was at least 250 people, and it was all on the lawn in the back patio. It was um, a beautiful night, and just very glad to see that. I also want to thank um, uh, for the, the Mayor's uh, Juneteenth Walk on Saturday morning, uh, our police chief and the police department who, um, and emergency management, uh, Justin Beck, Grancoots, um, and others who helped um, make sure that um, those participating in the walk uh, were safe as they uh, had to cross a number of, um, a number of streets. Um, the Mayor's Walk concluded, by the way, um, at the uh, Covenant Church north of the library. Um, as uh, was mentioned by a speaker earlier this evening very eloquently, that the church was founded by um, the forebears of Mary Thompson, and uh, they were hardened abolitionists. And there is a plaque um, um, on the um, right away in front of the church, um, with more information about Southfield's connection uh, to the Underground Railroad. Um, I also would like to mention that yesterday, uh, we had a highly successful garden walk. This is the 14th annual, having missed last year due to uh, the pandemic. Um, and I want to thank the homeowners, um, there were 14, 15 of them, uh, who allowed the public to uh, view their yards, um, some beautiful yards in the um, uh, Franbrook neighborhood. And uh, I want to thank uh, First Student uh, who provided the shuttle buses uh, to take um, the participants in the annual garden walk from uh, stop to stop on the, uh, on the tour. And um, I want to thank the council for your, uh, and the planning commission for your support of uh, the McKinley Project. Um, I am not directly involved in this, as I am not part of SF Community Renewal. I am the Chair of the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Commission, and I am unabashed in my support for housing, affordable housing, as well as market rate housing. The demand that I hear, particularly from some of our older residents, who are um, and, and just last week spoke, speaking to someone that can't find anything here and has found something in Farmington Hills, and yet has been a homeowner in Southfield uh, for decades, but uh, would like to move into a condo, condominium so that um, uh, she's a widow, uh, and would uh, like to have something that's- uh like to have something that's um more maintenance free. And I know that Councilman Frazier um has has long advocated that we need to do things uh to attract younger people to our city and part of it um are amenities, but they're also uh it's about housing. So um I make no um bones about it. I am extremely um ardent in my support for new housing. I'm glad to see that uh housing was um uh is on the horizon, other units uh between uh Arborloft and um across the street from City Hall on Central Park Boulevard. Um they're getting close to a development agreement for a hundred and sixty new units. The uh rental units that were built at Twelve Mile in Southfield, a hundred and fourteen units several years ago, all rented within ninety days at rental prices up to twenty-three hundred dollars a month. Spring Haven Villa uh was completed last year, a hundred and twenty-three units. Rent is twenty-four hundred a month uh in Spring Haven Villa, and they were all rented prior to the completion of construction. People want to live here and we need to provide a diversity of housing in this community. And we need to uh try to keep our longtime residents here that just don't want the four or five bedroom, three bedroom house anymore. They they want a downside, but their church, their friends, uh their life has cert uh you know, has um centered on the city of Southfield. I don't want to see those people move um because there's we have nothing to offer them. So once again, uh thank you, council, um and to the planning commission uh prior uh in their prior meetings. And uh I am always open to talk to anybody in Washington Heights if they have further questions uh regarding this project, or I will refer them uh to Corey Moffett, who is the chair um of the SF Community Renewal. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Administration, Fred?
Thank you, Madam President. Two brief comments. Uh last Monday's meeting, we had a gentleman on Prosper Street uh express concerns regarding the gypsy moth. A number of a- 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 activities and actions have taken place in the past week. Just this afternoon, I had forestry, um engineering, stormwater, um had conversations with uh Parks and Rec. To councils, for council's knowledge, we have three, three staff members who are very knowledgeable regarding forestry and have various certifications, two within our Public Works Group and one uh in Parks and Recreation. The uh Prosper Street is being surveyed. Uh Brandy, our stormwater engineer, sits on multiple uh committees, the Alliance for Rouge. Uh she's involved with an invasive uh a an invasive species committee, which has been primarily focused on Oak Oakland County. We are still gathering information. Forestry will be doing an assessment of Prosper Tree Street. Um in addition, our website will begin to include uh more information regarding the gypsy moth. Uh we will put together some type of plan of action as well as education. The experts so far are telling us we're a little too late in the season to do any treatment, but we are looking at options for next year. The Public Works North Parks and Rec uh have had no calls this year. However, two years ago, we did have a number of calls from Prosper Street. I'm bringing this information to council to let you know we are still working on this issue and we pretty much have a a good team of people working on what the appropriate response should be. Uh we are also, uh the Wildlife Committee uh will be involved with us somehow. Um we've uh we've taken a look at some of what some of our peers are doing, particular Rochester Hills and Farmington. So I'm asking council to stay tuned. I'm waiting to hear the assessment from staff regarding the uh gypsy moth infestation in that particular neighborhood. Uh I would also like to remind uh council and for the public, City Hall, the lobby of our main building is open for uh the general public as well as the uh public, the Muddy Boots Building, which houses the building planning and engineering. General public can come into that area. People coming into that area as well as the lobby are asked to wear a mask if they've not been vaccinated. We always encourage people to still wear a mask. The Parks and Rec Building is uh being serviced through the pavilion window at this point. We'll evaluate that. The library is open uh to the general public. Tomorrow being June twenty-second, with the mask mandate being lifted, the city will be following, for the most part, rules established by MiOSA. And that those rules are if you've been vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask. If you have not been vaccinated, you should be wearing a mask. This presents a lot of challenges for the administration. Uh we're still working on uh what the protocol may be in the library, but we are doing our best to follow the uh the guidelines of MiOSA and the CDC. Hope that information is is helpful. Um it's pretty much a case by department, by department basis and what types of programs and activities they are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Uh city attorney?
Yes, good evening, um Madam President. Um I have nothing further to add tonight. I wish everyone a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Uh Madam Clerk?
Uh good evening, everyone. Really briefly, just uh as uh my colleagues alluded to, just it was good to see all of the different activities that went on um during the Juneteenth, uh seeing our community celebrate. And I did um ask for the administration to consider us getting Juneteenth banners on Evergreen for our Juneteenth celebration of twenty twenty-two. So I think that will be a good touch as we continue to celebrate um this occasion. Thank you.
Thank you. A city treasurer? Our planner, are you still on the line? City assessor? Okay, our city engineer? All right, hearing none. We have nothing to schedule. Uh any other comments from anyone? Hearing none?
Stay safe.
I'm sorry? Herb, was that you?
It might have been me, Madam Chair. I just said stay safe, I think, yeah.
Okay. Uh I just wanted to mention that um Cable Fifteen is now adding at the very end a list of events that would be going on in the city. So for those that's in our viewing audience, you will now see some of the events through the Parks and Rec uh department and upcoming events uh on screen. So uh rather than when the meeting is over, if we just leave that up for a minute for others to view, it just gives you a a little bit of information as to what's going on in Parks Direct, Parks and Recreation Department uh in in any upcoming events. And with that being said, thank you to everyone. Enjoy your Fourth of July holiday and we'll talk to you next month. Uh stay safe and uh meeting adjourned.